And this should really not take forever. Watch your guys' phones for it to pop up. There we go. All mine popped up. Okay, and then I just need to record. And you're live everywhere now. So go for it. Diane, we're live on everything now. If somebody wants to start somewhere? If you guys want to start with the agenda or whatever you want to start with.
Diane, you're muted.
Diane, you're on mute still.
There. Okay, good. Right, I did send out, I did email out the agenda. I can put it up on the screen or we can just, I can just walk through it verbally and we could talk about it. I don't know if you want the thing up on the screen or not, but I will do it. I have it. Anybody care? One way or another?
I can just read through it.
Okay. What?
I like screen shares. We have one either way. So you do you, however you like to do it.
Okay. Well, if I have the screen share up, I can't see people rolling their eyes at me. That's the only...
Great.
Pluses and minuses.
Well, you know, I've been, the host has disabled me, my ability to share a screen, so I won't be able to do that.
It's a setting.
It's a setting, Tiffany.
You haven't done anything, so...
Administrator Tiffany, it's a setting, so...
I believe that when Zoom upgraded all of their security features at the beginning of, or at the end of May, that became default disabled. And so it used to be default enabled. So that's probably what happened.
Okay, so I'm gonna run to the printer and get my copy. So in the meantime, though, the first thing we always do is go over the agenda for the council meeting on Monday and the legislation. And I don't want to steal Brian, Mark's thunder. So if you'd like to go ahead and talk about the legislation that's coming up and ask if there's any questions?
Yeah, we are doing the second reading of the 2020, 2020, 2021 tax budget, which as everyone here knows, but for anyone watching at home, is not our actual village budget, but just our projections of income tax and various other tax revenue for the next year. And then first readings on our four mil, four mil replacement levy. Like we have a resolution stating why it's necessary, and then a resolution to put it on the ballot.
Hey, um, excuse me, sir. If, um, and this may not be the place for it, as I've never done this before, but where would one, would I send an email to you to address legislation? Is the legislation committee or like to propose something?
Ooh, good question. I do not know that.
Can, you can propose, you can work on whatever you want, then give it to the committee to consider. Anybody can initiate legislation.
Yeah, it might also, your process may depend on what the nature of the legislation. So if it is pertinent to a particular committee's work. So like, I would, I would feel like I wasn't doing it right if I wanted to propose legislation regarding the pool or the lakes and I didn't start it in the community committee. Or I would feel like...
Personal opinion, Brian. It doesn't require, the short answer is it does not require that.
Tony, you will note that I started with, I would feel like I wasn't doing it right if. So that, that is in fact a clause that indicates I am voicing my personal opinion.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just stating the facts.
Well, and I, and I, and I agree with, and I agree with Brian is that if you, if you want to, being on the legislative committee, I will volunteer that if you, if you bring something that you'd like to propose as legislation and you, hopefully you've done some research first and gotten, so that would help, be helpful to legislative committee to know that you've done the research. And I would think if that involved other people on council or even in the residents who have expertise in a certain area, that would be relevant, that it would be nice to have that worked on in advance of bringing it to legislative committee. But you don't even have to bring it to the legislative, you know, you can, but to me, the most efficient way to do it, to actually move something along quickly is to, is to do the research, bring all the facts to legislation committee, and then, and then, you know, have something written up to be proposed to council. But on the other hand, and it's nice to kind of float it in the work session because of the other five council people are opposed to the whole idea. You're not going to get very far with it anyhow, so.
I don't want to take away from what David's trying to find out right now, but this is, I'm glad you brought this up because this is a topic that I wanted to discuss today is, is how legislation is initiated. And I understand what you guys are saying about it'd be nice if someone else did all of the work and then the committee gets to take it from there. But I really believe that the committee needs to start taking the initiative to start addressing the, the ordinance issues we have, like permitting and, and swimming pools is a great example. It's like, I've been pointing out that this needs to be addressed. I don't feel it's my response that it's, that I should be the one to have to do all the work and then present it to the committee. My opinion is the legislative committee needs to start taking on the task of writing legislation. You know, it's that simple. And it doesn't have to go, just like, for example, swimming pools. I'm not sure what committee that would fall under and who would need to do the work first, but I believe the people on the committee need to start doing some work.
So by, well, there's a lot to unpack in there. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I was gonna say, is that like my lake resolution that went around for eight months?
That's a great example, Joe, is that you went, you took the initiative and put it all together and council reviewed it and, you know, I think, I'm sorry, I'm embarrassed to say, we did pass that, didn't we?
No.
It never got passed.
For it, but then it never passed.
But you're the one that's, that feel, I mean, that's, this is a great example. It's that you don't need to have council support. You can try to write up something and get them to pass it like Joe did.
Well, okay, so let's, all right, so that's, that's not, that's totally not fair in that we did try to vote for Joe's. He tabled it. The last one was tabled by him, and let's move on. Please let's move on to, to stop talk. You know, we got two hours here, got two hours. Let's, let's move, let's talk about something positive moving forward.
Let's just skip this topic and not get anything done about it, move on to something else.
I didn't say that. I said I was speaking specifically about the reported proposal.
Back to David's proposal, yeah.
And David, I would say somewhat to the spirit, I think, of some of what you're asking. The majority of the legislation that we voted on this year has just come from the administrative office, you know, things like the, the tax budget, the approving officers and, and all of that. Really, the only legislation we've had go through, seriously go through committee this year has been the sidewalk. And, you know, that did start in planning and zoning. They came up with some ideas. They sent it to us. Of course, we then sort of started with their ideas and then made changes in legislative committee. But I would also agree with council person Wolf when, when he says, you know, if, if you have an issue, if you have something, if you come up with a proposal, you know, I mean, I'm not, not against having meetings and having long insightful legislative committee meetings to go over legislation. But, you know, those ideas should come in my, my view again, somewhat from the various subcommittees that would have preview, you know, overview of those or from people who are on council or even not on council who are passionate about an issue.
Okay, okay. So I guess, I guess to make a, to make a long discussion and debate short, I have been feeling rather inspired lately by the, you know, the peaceful demonstrations and the social, the, the issues going on. And being that June is traditionally Pride Month, and there have been so many demonstrations going on. Last week, I came up with a, or I found a template for a resolution, more or less, you know, a government regu- resolution. And I typed one out that if passed by council and signed by the mayor, however it were worked, I would hope to establish June 1st in the village of Minerva Park as a, I mean, it kind of feel good, but like, you know, a celebratory day of the diversity and community spirit in our little village. And I'd like to, I'd like to get that out there and, you know, have some sort of, you know, formal resolution that we're a, you know, a village that celebrates our, you know, community and our diversity and...
Just like what Joe was trying to do with the lake, and that's...
No, that's a, yeah, that's a declaration. What you want to do is a declaration and you, you don't need, you actually don't need council to do that. That's done through the, I, the last time the mayor had a declaration she wanted, I researched this. This is how I know this. And so really, the mayor is in charge of declarations, and if you propose a declaration, mayor has the authority to then act on it and, and it's, but it's not a council motion or anything like that. It's not a resolution. It's called a declaration.
Okay.
Well, does that, does that become some sort of policy then?
No, it's a declaration. It's a happy feel-good thing. Twenty seven.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to rewrite the Ohio revised code. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make some kind of formal statement or propose some formal statement from our administration and government that we are proud of all of the different people and different groups who live here. I'll send, I will send everybody the text as it stands. Again, if, if Madam Mayor decides she wants to roll with it, she can. If not, well, I tried. That's, that's all I've got, guys. I'm sorry to derail things so early.
That's not to really, it's fine. And there's lots of, if you Google declarations, there's gobs of samples of what, and I'm sure they have one on.
I found a good template. It looks very, it's one of those like whereas, therefore.
Yeah, 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 that's it. That's exactly a declaration.
Whereas's and therefor's.
Yeah.
I'll send that. I'll send that out to everybody. I really, I would be so proud if our community and our administration backed it. Because, I mean, it's, it's a rough time out there for some groups of people. And for the people who fit into those groups in our community, we should be doing what we can to make them feel safe and valued and appreciated. And I'd love to be a part of doing that, so.
Well, they're neat, we need a little bit more feel-good stuff right now, just to, I hate to say, from a public relations standpoint, that, that we're doing whatever we can.
Yeah, I'll send you guys this. I will send everybody it. And if Madam Mayor decides she wants to move forward with that, then that is fantastic. That, that's all I've got today, guys. I'm, I'm sorry.
Thanks for bringing it up, David, though. Got me going.
Yeah, sounds political.
Well, any other legislation, Mark? Mark, back to legis-
No, other than I am still waiting to see revised draft of the aforementioned sidewalk stuff after our last discussion with it.
Those are coming back to you soon, sir.
Thank you. I figured it was.
While we're still on legis-, while we're still on legislation, there's a good chance you guys are gonna get an additional piece of legislation that's being worked on right now. And it may not come by Monday. It may be the next Monday, but there are some grant opportunities that Kim is looking into for us as far as the CARES Act goes. And she's been communicating with Jesse and Jean to work on that. So there may be some legislation. I don't know if it's gonna be, I don't know if it's gonna make it Monday. But if not, hopefully by the following Monday, we'll have some additional pieces to add in there. So, but it's all good things, not anything we're asking for, but has to go through the process.
It's for what? I, there was a glitch. I missed.
Um, part of the CARES Act, there's, there's some additional monies and things like that, that we may be able to recoup some funds that we've spent. I mean, the amount of money we've probably spent on hand sanitizers, Lysol wipes, just little things in general, Plexiglas. Though I'm sure the list goes on and on. I'm, there's a lot that we've spent this year that was supplies, not, you know, we've already hit our budget for what we were supposed to spend all year in supplies when you're buying fourteen dollar bottles of hand sanitizer for everybody that's in the building, everybody that comes in the building. We've had to install a hand sanitizer thing. So as you guys are aware, everywhere you go, you have all those different things. So there are some funds that we're looking to try to get from that and not just that for additional employees and additional, you know, extra hours that employees have had to work and different things like that. So Kim's working on it. You guys may see it on Monday. You guys may see it the following Monday. As we work through it, we'll, we'll get that to you, but it's just to try to get some funds. Free money.
Extra money for sanitizing and wiping down and all that good stuff.
So we're working on some things like that.
Okay, uh, if we're ready to move on, that, I don't think, there wasn't anything else on the agenda. It was just reports from staff. So committee updates are next, and the first one is streets. So I don't know if there are any on the agenda. I have listed the old outstanding stuff like the Elm Hurst Sewer Hole, sanitary sewer grant delay, storm sewer project, Jasmine Market, and flow line estimate received. Those were the last updates from previous meeting.
Sorry, Tony. Okay, sorry. I wasn't sure if Tony was answering. A couple updates. I don't know if they were all on the list, but trash bid, leaf bid are all out. They should be back the fifteenth. So just as an FYI on that, that's the deadline. So if you know anybody that wants to do the, you know, it was pub, it was, we advertised both of them about two or three weeks ago. So that was done. Those bids are due back the fifteenth. We'll look at those when they come. I do have an estimate for the Elm Hurst sinkhole-ish. I know Tony went and looked at it, so Tony and I will talk about that, whether or not he's gonna have the ability to go fix it. The one on Elm Hurst, the little hole that... Huh?
I think it's Elm Hurst. The first, are you talking about around this storm sewer?
Yes.
I fixed the one. The, there's one curb that's, I haven't fixed, but it's not a sink. It's worth a...
Might be that one. You and I will talk in a little bit because Courageous was actually out here and called me and asked me if we were, he gave me an estimate on it. I'll give it to you. I'll send it to everybody. It was one of the ones on Elm Hurst. So if Tony fixed the other one, then that one's done. The flow line, do not have the date for flow line to come out, but that is moving forward. The OPWC grant loan, sorry, it's a loan. That is still not happening. We got the update last week. I believe I sent it to everybody. It's still in limbo. Again, I don't have high hopes for it, just being honest. So I, again, I think that's one that we're finishing up all of the documents to get it out to bid per you guys. The last time we had talked about just going ahead and paying for it. So he's finishing up everything for that, so we can get that out. We did bid, we did send the bid documents for the storm sewer repairs. That has actually been bid. I think we're on our second week of bidding or advertising for that one. So that is moving forward. So as far as that goes, I think that's, is there anything else on the list?
Jasmine Market.
That, yeah, flow line. I don't have a date for them to come out, but it is, it's on their schedule. It should be getting on their schedule. We've, we've done everything that we can do except for get flow line out here.
Yep. The, Jean has, his team has prepared complaint to go forward to environmental court, and so...
I don't think they know anything about that.
Oh, gotcha. Well, that will be, it'll be a court action.
Could you give us some, what are you talking about now?
That'd be, that'll be forthcoming. We, we've been trying to work cooperatively with, excuse me, the Yasmin Market principles, even though we, you know, had some issues catch basin in the back, but then there was another incident of pumping into our public street during one of the rain events, and it's prompted us to maybe take this, get, get some, oh, get, get a intermediary, a judicial forum where maybe we can, we tried to, we tried to work through the zoning inspector and basically we're told, you know, get off the land. So anyway, at this point, to sort of push this initiative forward and attack the stormwater issues as a whole. We may, we may be pushing forward with asking for the intervention of the environmental court down in Franklin County, which is exactly what, what that court is designed for. Well, as soon as we get the final, the complaint is, I'd say ninety percent drafted. As soon as we get the last exhibits, I think we'll let council know, but we need to go ahead and get that process started. We think it will expedite the cooperation, not only on the, the investigation through flow line, but also getting any, any and all other issues about their drainage brought to the surface here.
This is a little confusing. Could I, so they accumulated water behind the store and they were pumping it out into Cleveland Avenue? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
They were, they were actually accumulating water in their parking lot, which is really the design of how it's supposed to happen, but they don't like, and their customers don't like it being retained in the, in the parking lot.
What I'm understanding here is how we're moving forward with this case when we don't know the answers to the flow line issue. This is mind-boggling to me.
Tony, I'll, I'll answer this one a little bit. As far as that goes...
I don't understand what you guys are doing. I want to understand what you're doing.
What, the number one issue, I'll answer this really quick. It doesn't matter the outcome of the issue. It doesn't matter all of that. Right now, they are taking all of the water that is in the parking lot flooding Jordan Road and Cleveland Avenue to make it not passable. So the environmental part to this is you cannot disperse water from their parking lot and flood an entire road to where we can't get out.
They weren't flooding an entire road.
Oh, they were flooding it and we have video.
I went, I went...
Not when we were there. Jordan Road was completely blocked. No. Tony, this is one I won't, I won't not, because when they overload our systems, they then block all of it from...
Goes into our system, and what they were doing, it is just taking it down Jordan Road instead of going out the back.
You can't flood the roads.
I like to stand on what you guys are pursuing.
You can't, you can't flood the roads like that. They, they eroded everything through there with their, with their pumps.
What are they supposed to do then? What are they supposed to do?
They're supposed to fix their pipe, Tony. That's part of the issue.
We have to, we have to...
Agree that we would help find the problem.
A person, a person hopefully can't place hazards in her, in the roadway.
Correct.
That's pretty universal.
Well...
Okay, so, so basically the mayor stated that she has video of Jordan Road being flooded. So she has evidence. This is not gonna stop flow line from happening.
No, no, because we want resolution.
It is, but they need to, if they're pumping onto Jordan Road and there is video evidence that there's flooding for even a short period of time.
But if the flood...
Well, that's happening, then, then there's no, there shouldn't be any problem at all with taking this tack. It doesn't gonna, it's not gonna stop anything else from happening. I...
I'm not implying that it's stopping. Listen, hold on, everybody, if I could...
What's the ideal solution to the problem? Is it the market to install drain?
Their parking lot floods is the solution to the problem. We haven't figured that out yet.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. The, the solution would be for them to have drainage, right?
We don't know if it's their problem or our problem yet.
Well, I wasn't speaking of the who it belongs to. The water in the parking lot, where does it go if they don't pump it out of there?
Goes back into Tiffany's yard for one and everyone behind her.
Well, it's supposed to go into a storm sewer, is what I'm hearing.
But we don't know. Here, okay, wait, we established one thing.
Storm sewer is not functioning properly.
Whose problem it is. Is that, isn't that accurate? Wait a minute, hold on, everybody. Isn't that an accurate statement? That we do not know what is causing the flooding in their parking. Is that accurate or not?
I think they suspect and we suspect that there's a broken part of the private line that they and the building north of them use to get to a public sewer. They've had no appetite for investigating whether that's true. That's how it's supposed to work, and that, that's not a public line.
Could we just get a yes or no, could we get a yes or no answer? Do we know who, what is causing the problem? Yes or no?
Private line is blocked, Tony.
Okay, then how can we move forward if we know?
We're going to help them by investigating. We have to have multiple angles of enforcement in this case, and these processes take a long time.
I'm done with this. Move on.
All right.
Go if there's a private line.
Move on.
From one place, from point A to point B, wouldn't the environmental act...
We don't know where the problem's at, yet we're moving forward and seeing it's their problem.
Okay, so.
Continue.
Is there anything else on streets? Anything else on streets? So, okay, and moving on to, moving on to another wonderful topic. Communications is the next commi-, next committee. I think the two things I have on here are the things from the, or of course, the, the website is, is in process and maybe the mayor can give us an update on that. And setting up the next meeting was based on village staff being able to come to the meeting and, and present what they've done so far, assuming it's appropriate at this time. And the other, the other two things I have on here are, I did do the text vendor analysis. I finished that analysis. I know you're really busy, mayor, with the pool right now. But I, I do have that and, and we can either, I can forward it, I'll forward it to everybody in an email. And, you know, we can also touch on it in the next communications meeting, or you can call me on the phone and I can talk to you about it. If that's acceptable. And then, and, but I could present it now, but I, we, we, you know, we might not want to take the time to get into that level of detail at this meeting. And then the, yes, and, and those are the two things, just website and a text vendor analysis. So, Mayor, do you have a website update?
Not really. Honestly, I, well, I don't know what I told you guys the last time, but they're just doing, I think I sent you guys the front page, what the front page is gonna look like with some, you know, with the basic pictures and some of the tabs and all of that is going to be adjustable. So we can change the tabs. If we don't like this tab to say this, we, we can adjust it. So Becky has been working on it. As you guys are fully aware, I've been gone, I was gone most of the week. And then I don't want to give personal information, but Becky wasn't here Friday. If anybody wants to know why, like, we could tell you outside of here, but so she wasn't here Friday. So to be honest with you, other than talking to them on the phone every single day, I've not had to sit down to go over website design or anything since last week. Last week is when they were asking about whether or not we wanted all of the newsletters moved over and just a couple of basic things like that. So I do believe we are still on target for a July completion date to where it's gonna be turned over to us. And then, so, I mean, in the next week or two, whenever you guys want, I can verify with Becky when she's available. I mean, honestly, if we could do it earlier in the day, that would be better. But if it has to be in the evening, we'll find out what evening works best for you guys and then see what she can do as well. But we'll make it work either direction. So it's just, again, she does work forty hours a week during the week. So if we do it in the evening, it's gonna be overtime. Or I've gotta let her go a couple hours early. And right now with everything else, it's, it's busy in there. So we've opened the doors back up. People are coming in. So it's busy.
Okay, is there anything else on communications?
Well, I make one comment. Uh, when we get caught up, I, I think Tiffany, you'd said June 22nd or something that, that they might, we might be able to see a preview of the website. I don't know if we're going to have, I don't know if we're going to have any access to that, but I've, I've talked to residents about, Tony mentions this a lot. And everybody's mentioned that they'd like to have more interaction or communication with, uh, the public, you know, the residents. But I've done a lot of research on this and unless at some point, you know, the website had portals for some kind of involvement, uh, I don't know how that would be done, but it would just be a complaint box is what it would turn out to be, in my opinion. So that's something, that's just something we can all think about. Not something coming up right away, but.
Without, without beating a dead horse, um, the current issue that we have with the website, everybody's fully aware. Um, it can, most of the, most of it can only be updated by the computer that it's on or, uh, what am I trying to say? No, you can't update it from a cell phone. You can't do anything like that. You can't. So Becky, the only way that that website can be updated is if Becky goes into the office and updates certain things. So we will have access to being able to have areas that we can adjust. For example, we plan on letting chief have access to his police department page. If he wants to upload additional pictures, if he wants to do that, chief is going to have access to being able to just be able to get into his one little section, one little page. He will not have access to change the front page or anything like that, but each, each area will have their own section that they can update the website. So once we get to that point, I don't know what we're going to have access to be able to do or what we're going to allow. I mean, that, maybe that's something communications is going to determine what you guys are going to want to be able to have access to do. For example, I would love to have been able to put on there that the pool's opening today. It's not on the website. It's not going to be on the website until Monday. It is what it is. There's nothing I can do about it because we can't do anything about it. Um, so it's, it, that's, that's like, it's horrible. How do you work that way? You don't. That's why we're getting a new website. So point being, we will have the ability to do certain things on there. Um, because again, there are times in which we do know people are not at work. I mean, you don't expect somebody to be at work 365 days a year. So if there's something that needs updated on the weekend, I personally, as you guys know, I post on Facebook. I do different things like that. I know you guys do too. I want to be able to put that the pool's opening today. I, I, like, it's driving me nuts that I can't just go in there and hit a button. And so, yes, I want people to be able to, I want her to have the majority of it, obviously, under her fingertips, just because you can't have 15 people changing the same thing, but I do expect us to have different, you know, Diane had always talked about some sort of blog or, um, you know, for council to be able to put updates or this or that. So I think that there could potentially be areas that we monitor. I don't know if everybody can, you know, update their own little committees or whatever. I mean, we're getting there, we're getting to the end and that's something that we will be talking about. That's something hopefully at the next communication committee that Becky will be able to tell us this is what we can do and this is what we can't do.
Alrighty.
All right, uh, then if we're ready to move on, uh, the community, uh, committee is next. We had, uh, previously notes on, uh, the lake cleanup, the, um, lakes projects on, being on hold. Um, and, uh, we discussed lawn care. I did, uh, forward a bid from Bio Green so that, uh, mayor, did you get that? I sent it to everybody to say to have a comparison quote. Um, so, uh, we have, uh, a status, uh, perhaps on pool repair update, pool opening day, um, and, uh, the lake cleanup and anything new.
So I guess I can take the lead on that, um, if no one objects. Um, so we have resumed communications and, um, professional assessments of the around the lake area. And one of those was a visit from a state forester, which I was lucky enough to catch the tail end of because my, my alarm had been lovingly tampered with by my wife, to be perfectly honest, but that's neither here nor there. Um, I managed to get in touch with the gentleman and he sent us a list of a few different recommendations. Um, some seem possible, some seem, uh, maybe not ideal for our situation. Um, if, I know I was sent some, I believe, um, Mayor Hughes, I believe you were sent some of the same recommendation as well. Okay, I will forward that to everybody as well so we can discuss it, but.
Are you talking about plants, David?
I'm talking about lake shore management strategies, some of which, a large portion of that includes plant and tree management. Um, so I'll send everybody a copy of that so we can discuss it, but there are a couple of options in there that we can use. Um, next we have the lake cleanup, which will be occurring at 8:00 AM to noon on June the 13th. Um, so the only things I would like to know from those who have more experience and time in this organization than I do are what our tool, um, inventory would be and from what funding we could possibly obtain, I don't know, like a, a box of donuts and some coffee for these people afterwards. Or, you know, something along those lines. Those are the main things.
Full or full of water, some drinks or something. I mean, it's going to be warm.
That's an even, Tony, that's an even better idea. I appreciate that. You've, you have been a fantastic resource with this stuff.
Eric's been buying the, the bagels for years, haven't you, Eric?
He's been off the hook here for a little while.
Yes, looking forward to bringing him back.
Oh, you can show up next Saturday at eight.
Well, at any rate, what I'm hoping to, um, figure out is how to establish or, you know, how to get that, you know, funded.
We've got a lot of tools in the shed, mainly, I say a lot, there's a lot of shovels and rakes and straw. Look, I mean, there's several different kinds of rakes, you know.
Wonderful. Wonderful. So the last thing I have, I, I keep, I keep my section short. The last things I have is, um, when we have, when we're done, we have our bags of trash. Now, in other cleanups that I've been part of, we would put them all on the side of the road in no locations and one person would swing by after and just pick them all up and toss them in the dumpster. If that's possi-, if that's not possible, like if our maintenance gentleman is busy at the time, I'll do it myself. But, um, otherwise we'd have to have everybody just, you know, take their stuff to the dumpster. So, you know, we could figure out something to do with, uh, how to bag up the trash effectively and get it all where it needs to be effectively.
Well, I think the big, you know, the variable here is how many people show up.
Yeah.
The more people that show up, the more we can have them, you know, try to get the stuff into the dumpster, but I think.
Yeah, you've been, I know you've been a part of the thread between myself and a couple of members of the community. So.
They, they have hip waders in, in that tool shed, Tony?
But, but, you know, the weather is looking like it's going to be sunny all the way through until next weekend.
That's, that's what they're saying. Clear and sunny.
It should be dry enough to get down in there. You know, that's, you know, and, and, you know, I'd like to see the, uh, report because, uh, you know, that's the big topic that I think we need to start talking about is.
I agree completely.
Is what trees can be saved over there? And if, and if we're, we need to, on both the North and South Lake, you know, all the trees, the, the shorelines eroded away to the point where they're all getting ready to fall in.
Well, we have run into a bit of a issue being that a lot of those trees are also on some private land. But, um, as best as we can, I am looking up the, um, I'm finding the information, I'm finding the email right now, um, and I will forward everybody a copy of it. Um, so those who would like to read it are welcome to. Those who aren't Big Lake people can just go ahead and send it to the recycling.
Well, if a tree's, if a tree's in peril of falling and it's on private property, doesn't that go, come into P and Z someplace, Tony?
If it's on private property, it's the private property, it's the property owner's responsibility.
Yeah, then somebody sent them a note or something?
I think along the North Lake, a big, and it, it's hard to say where it starts and stops, but there is an area around the North Lake that is the village's property. It's not till we get back, Paul Miller's property is the north end of the, of the lake and his property line is where the village's responsibility stops at his property.
There's a house. There's a residence that's, uh, two residences south on the east side of North Lake. And there's a tree that's literally horizontal. But that particular driveway is the access point we've used in the past. You can drive down that driveway and go straight to the lake.
I've started to talk to some people about coming out and getting a price to get that crap out of the, the north end. You know, it's not, I don't, it's not going to be anything like everybody's talking about, hundreds of thousands of dollars. But, uh, you know, I, Joe, I'd like to come over here this weekend and take a look at what's going on in your backyard there and see. Uh, cause I know it's all exposed now that it's dried.
Well, yeah, although, uh, this last rain of water came up some.
Yeah.
It's going back down again, but it's, it's the entire uh, north forest of North Lake is just muck.
Right. That's what I need to get into and see how much stuff we got to deal with there. Because if you go around the lake, like in front of Mrs. Pond's house, there isn't any muck there. It's all good ground. What we're looking to have in the bottom of the lake, you know, so the estimates that people are coming up with that how much, you know, uh, muck needs to be removed is, I think overstated. Uh, but we're going to get a chance here in the next week to take a look at that lake real good. And I'm going to have started getting some people out there to take a look at, at coming up with some pricing to remove that stuff.
I think that's a great idea because I've been a, I've been a proponent of trying to do, you know, do some sort of mitigation on some of it while we're waiting for the, you know,
That's exactly.
Pot of gold to do.
That's where I'm heading, Joe. Is there anything else with the lake?
Yeah, Paul Mil-, Paul Miller got mad. He sold his flat bottom boat. He sold the hip waders, the long poles with nets. He got rid of all of it.
Well, he's getting ready to move.
Well, Dave, the only other thing I would say is, uh, I think it would be, uh, be, best to have some of those, um, just, uh, signs to advertise it around the park. I know it's kind of late to do that, but maybe we can, uh, to have no, no signs, you know, you know, like the, um, Easter egg contest this weekend. We don't, council, we used to have ones for the council, uh, work sessions. I mean, we really, not having any signs out that there is something going on is, I think, too bad.
If we post something on the face, you can tell by the, the demonstration that we have or the protest that, you know, posting something on Facebook gets quite a bit of people's attention if they want.
Yeah, I'm surprised that, because I, you know, a lot of people pay attention to this.
Yeah, I can, um, if somebody were to give, I mean, I guess I could just do it under my own name, um, I, I could do the open discussion and the, um, Minerva Park page, write up some messages.
What I would describe is that we're, you know, one of the projects that I like to see somebody working on is if you look in the, in the South Lake, you can see that there, the, you know, 30 years of kids throwing rocks out into the water is all the retaining walls are out in the middle of the lake, you know, piece by piece, they've been thrown into the wa-, into the lake. You know, there's a project there for some, for people to pick up all the rocks and bring them back to the shoreline. You know, and, and rebuild the retaining wall so we can try to save the trees. You know, that's.
You know, I just had, I just now had an interesting thought. When I was in Boy Scouts, I, I earned my Eagle Scout and, and as all Eagle Scouts do, through public service projects. And I was thinking, I could get in touch with some of the local Boy Scout troops and see if there are any area or any troops interested in nature projects. I mean, again, this is coming out of my head right now, so I need to hammer out some details. But that's something that I'll definitely start thinking about more if that's, uh, not opposed, because that's a really good idea. Tony's talking about something like that.
Depending on how many people show up, you know, this, this cleanup is, is going to go on for a little while. You know, there, if, I don't know, I wish everybody would go and take a look at the North Lake and look at all the trees and crap that need to come out of there.
So we also need to preserve a few of them because those are good sunning areas for turtles and birds.
I, this has been brought up over and over again, and the thing I say about that is that wait a week and another tree will fall down. You know, so, you know, saying that we need to make sure we got a tree in the lake is ridiculous because it just happens every week, every two weeks.
I'm trying to figure out if my camera's showing it right now. Can you see it, Tony?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you got a nice camera, Joe. I'll give you that. Yeah, I want to come over there and take a look, you know, I want to get down into it and start digging down and seeing how, how many feet of muck there is. But we'll take care of that, Joe. I'll see you the, over the weekend.
I'm guessing three or four feet.
Yeah, but, all right.
Okay, so. That's all I've got for community. I'm sorry.
Okay, so for community, then I'll kind of give you an update of what admin did or has done. So it's being advertised. Um, the newsletter should be at people's house yesterday, today, tomorrow. I'm not sure exactly when, but, um, we sent it out like Monday. So, um, depending on how far behind they are, you guys should have them. Or regardless, they should definitely be there by the 13th and it is advertised in there. Um, I would completely agree. We've got to get some signs out. We have to do some different things like that. Um, to be honest, I am trying, as you guys know, I post on MPCA. I think people get tired of seeing me post on the village. There's a couple that I've only posted on the village Facebook page. We've actually gotten a lot of new members on there recently. Um, because I'm not, I'm trying not to overload MPCA. I don't think it's, you know, it's not our place to put it on there. Unfortunately, that's just where the 700 people are. Um.
Well, I'll do it as a private citizen.
Yeah, so the only thing is, is when it's always me, I think people get tired of seeing me be, oh, that's just, you know, more pool junk or that's more this. And if they're not interested, they may not be looking at it because I'm the only one that does it. Um, so it would be nice if other people kind of posted here and there, just so it's not always me. Um, I have no problem doing it and obviously I'm the one that does it on the village page, but every single time I share it to MPCA, people just may get bored of seeing me. Um, so anyways.
I am typing right now.
Yeah, so we have gotten, um, but that being said, I have no problem doing it. It takes me seven seconds. The, um, we did get some buckets, some like five gallon buckets to also help out because when you'd use bags and trash bags, depending on if it's wet muck or this or that, obviously it's going to rip right through the bags. Um, so we did get some five gallon buckets, um, that we will be able to use and dump into. People can just kind of go back and forth. The dumpster is being delivered on the 12th. I do not have a time, but I'm sure later in the day. Um, so that will be there. Um, again, we did get trash bags, but honestly, that's all we've done. I've not been given a list of any additional things. Um, trying to do those little pickers, those little pickers can be up to $20 each. We're not doing that. Um, so people can get gloves and go pick up stuff. Simple as that. Um, so whatever you guys decide to do.
I'll get it later and we'll come up with stuff to get.
Yeah, I mean, you guys, I, yeah, so whatever you guys decide to do is fine. I'm just telling you dumpsters ordered. Buckets are going to be there. Uh, once they're gone, they're gone. Anybody can bring their buckets if they, you know, if they have them, wheelbarrows, bring your wheelbarrow, bring all that kind of stuff. So David, that would be something to post on there. If you have a wheelbarrow, bring it. It might make life easier for you. Um, we do have. Yeah, we do have the UTV.
Isn't there, isn't there a long pole on the net over at the pool?
There's a net in the shed. We, we'll get all the stuff out of the shed. There's, there's a bunch of stuff in there.
Okay, so let me finish real quick. So as far as that goes, um, if anybody wants admin to do anything with getting, I, I would agree. I think if you're going to do anything, you do not want coffee and cups and people wiping it down and doing all of that. I would just. I would just do little bottles of water, put it in some ice, move on with life.
Okay, that, yeah, I agree.
With COVID, I just wouldn't do it. Um, I'm a huge fan of getting donuts, but again, I don't know if it's a great idea with everybody picking donuts out of the thing. Do I have a problem with it? No, but other people may. You may just wanna nix the food in general. Just get water. Put it in an ice thing and be done with it. But, I mean, people aren't doing buffets, people aren't doing all that kind of stuff, so I think it would be dumb of us to get a box of donuts and let a bunch of people just go pick and throw it.
No, you're you're completely right. My my pro- my thought process was uh was pre-COVID on that.
Exactly. All of ours were, but I'm just thinking in general, um, it's not to be cheap. So I I want to throw that out there, but I think the bottles of water is probably the only thing that I would do. Um, and to be fair, you may just want to have one person standing at the bottle of water with gloves on or whatever and picking one bottle up at a time, so everybody's not putting their hand in there and grabbing the water. So um, those are just a couple of things that I would recommend, but again, I'm not in charge of this, so I just kind of wanted to tell you what we've done. The other point to this is tell me what you need. Um, if you need me to order something, do something. We will have hand sanitizer. We have gotten hand sanitizer. Um, I went yesterday and got some at Mark's. We were able to find, so if anybody needs any, Mark's had a ton yesterday. Um, and I will not say it was cheap. So we have gotten um hand sanitizer, so we will have some of that out there. I don't know, you know, maybe sitting right next to the water. Obviously, we're not putting hand sanitizer around the lake, so. Um. So any anything else you need from me. So we'll switch over to the pool for thirty seconds. You guys have seen enough about the pool. I've talked enough about it. It is not listed on the village page. Um, there are signups that are, you have to go to the village page to find it right now until it's on the website. It will be put on the website first thing Monday morning, so probably by eight fifteen, eight thirty, it will be there. There are a lot of signups already um for today. And really, we just did that um we will allow other people that show up at the pool in today. Clearly, we're gonna take their money. I'm just gonna say that. But for allowing people to sign up, we wanted to make sure that that was done. Um, for residents to have first choice to be able to get into the pool today. Um, and then same thing, I hate to say it, it was nice. A lot of residents were able to get on there and get some of their time slots put in there. We did not do that on purpose. It is posted on the village page, which is a public page. Um, so it is nine dollars per time slot per person. Right now, we have it limited to one time slot per membership. That being said, i- if there's slots available, talk to John, sign up for additional slots, whatever. Um, the reason that we're doing that right now is just so we can not have a thousand people show up at the pool at the same time. That was part of the the process. Um.
How long? What's the length of the slots? Are those one or two hours?
They're two and a half hours. They are all listed on the Facebook page. Um, when you click, you actually have three different signups. It's eleven thirty to two two thirty, and there's there's a thirty minute break between. The thirty minute break is for deep cleaning. Um, and to get people out and get people back in. That's what the breaks are for. Um, again, if we have layout people, they will, they will be allowed to stay. The adults that are just sitting on the sides, if it's not crowded, if it's crowded, they will be asked to leave. Just as an FYI, John is aware. Um, so if you see people that are staying longer, it is possible that they are layout people or they've already asked John if they can stay. I mean, it's gonna be on a first come, first served basis. He's not gonna throw people out if there's space. Um, but in the same sense, everybody, I'm just hoping is patient with him and with me. I do plan on being down there today just to try to help make sure people are going in the right entrance. We have one entrance in, one exit. Now, one of the things that has changed quite a bit. Um. And it was interesting because again, everybody knows I was in Florida last week and I was watching the pools when we were there. And nobody had ropes, so I thought, okay, this is kind of weird because our first initial intention was to put ropes every six feet. Well, we have been told that that's actually dangerous. Um, because we were gonna do six foot ropes all the way across and then we were gonna divide it six foot this way. Um. Because that's actually, if you read what they want you to do, they want you to have physical barriers. That's a physical barrier. We've been told that's not safe and we've actually been told um, from numerous people from Franklin County that that is not what they're expecting. There is going to be tape, visual tape inside the pool and out of the pool every six feet. So we're asking family and John and them are gonna be kind of, you know, again, having mostly residents there today. Um, it will be great to explain because residents are a lot of what we have coming in. Um, we will be able to show people, tell people, you guys will be able to monitor what you're doing. It was not an issue in Florida when we were there. We watched families separate. It's normal. You typically don't stand on top of your residents. I am gonna say this, though. John is not a babysitter. If you are sitting with one of your friends, your friends are there, you know, your kids are there playing with other friends. It is not his job to tell them that they cannot be next to their friends because they don't live in the same house. So I'm just tell, I and I've told John that. You are not a babysitter. If they're allowed to play with their friends, they're allowed to play with their friends. If they're not, they're not. So that is on the parents. And I'm saying that. Um, some people may not like that, but it's not his job to ask who lives in what household. Um, that is just a recommendation, not a mandatory type thing. So just as an FYI, John is there to control as much as he can. They will probably say social distancing five thousand times. Um. All of that said, it still boils down to the parents knowing what the parents want their children to do and parents watching their kids. And that is what I saw when we were there. Parents would tell them, hey, come over this way. Hey, come over this way. Um, we saw it a thousand times when we were there and I expect the same thing today. Um. In the event that we get to July, you know, first, July fifteenth, if things open up a little bit more, we will open up a little bit more. In the event that we're losing our rear ends on the pool, we are gonna close. Um, we have talked about it. The lifeguards are aware. John is aware. We're not gonna lose seventy thousand dollars on this pool this year. If we have to close early July, it'll happen. Um, we do not anticipate that, period. Um, we really don't. The signup has gone pretty well considering the fact that it's only on a Facebook page right now. And the phone probably rings a hundred times a day and that's probably a low estimate. Um, so.
It rang the whole time I was there last night.
It rang all day yesterday. It's just, we, and I'm gonna say this, we actually, they actually took it off the hook for a little bit so we could, they can't answer it. They literally cannot. So honestly, I plan on going down down there today to answer the phone. Um, because that's the only way people are gonna know that we're open. There's no other way. We don't have like a magic, you know. Um, I don't want ten TV there and bring the whole world. So it's just a matter of, you know, slowly letting people know that are calling the pool that we're open. So I plan on going down, answering the phones and doing some of that today to help out. Um, and helping watch the gate because the gate that we have that people are exiting is not normal. Um, so we have to make sure that people aren't sneaking in that side or kids aren't sneaking out that side because we don't want them playing in the parking lot, but that is the only option that we have. Um, so if anybody has any recommendations as you guys go to the pool, I know a couple of you guys are going. Let us know. Um, if there's something you don't like, if there's something that you do like, whatever, you know, just be patient with John. Don't give him a hard time. I'm not gonna rattle anymore about it. It's it's opening. People are gonna be happy. People are not gonna be happy. Um, but we worked really hard on making sure that we got the pool open. People are thrilled um for the most part. And we're gonna make it the best that we can and we're gonna do it as safe as possible and for the, so this may not be in this committee. Um. Playground's actually opening next week too. So that's Dwyane has said that playgrounds can open and they're gonna open, so. Um, whether the the virus hasn't gone away, whatever, it doesn't, I I'm doing what we are doing. Um, I'm not sure if we're gonna have Brian wiping it down a couple of times. I mean, obviously, we do not have the ability to send him over there every two hours, so we're gonna have to see what the rules are. I've not seen what the rules are yet, but we do anticipate opening the park. Just like the rules, you know. So once we, once we review what the rules are, we'll figure it out. It's not going away, but at the end of the day, it's your family's choice. If, in my opinion, it is your family's choice. If you want your child to play at the park, wipe it down. If you don't, stay home. And I'm not trying to be mean. I'm just trying to say that I can't I can't control twelve hundred people in their house in their choices. There are people that will not want to go and that's fine. And there are people that will and that's fine.
Um, Tiffany, as long as we're on the pool, so did we repair that drain or whatever that was sealed up? So all that got done?
So you guys are all gonna love this answer. Um, Rick West was actually there. I've talked to Rick West. The, it's actually not broken, or let me rephrase that. It's actually not concreted in. He said that they are crazy. Um, and it just needs adjusted. So he will be adjusting it with the water in there right now. He is not concerned about it. We actually talked to him before we did anything and before we did the repairs. So my plan at the end of this year, and the water is in it, the water has been in it for three days, the water is not leaking and everything is great. Um, could that change? Yes, but it could change whether we did a ten thousand dollar repair or thirty thousand dollar repair per the pool people that I talked to. It can happen with water in the pool or out. It could have happened at any time is what everybody has said. Um, but not as likely with water in it. Um. At the end of the year, I do plan on having it fully assessed. Um, we are still working with the insurance company. I did not do anything without the insurance company's blessing. He told us to go ahead and move forward because they had all of the documentation that they needed. Um, they know that the only way that we were going to be able to open was to get it open then. So as I get information about insurance claim, which I'm gonna be honest, it does not sound like they're gonna do anything. Um, but I will have the documents for public record because if anybody asks, why didn't we try it? We did. Um, it is, it is what it is. So yes, um, we had talked to Rick West. Rick West has actually fixed it once before. And he will, we are planning on using him at the end of the year to do all of the closing. He will adjust it, fix it, make sure we're good to go before winter. Um, so he is aware of it. He was there yesterday and fixed the pump, fixed the slide. Um, he was there for about an hour yesterday, just kind of tinkering with things. And that was the first time I met him. He was a great guy, so you know, he's he's really busy, but I don't think we'll have any problem getting him at the end of the year to do all of the final repairs.
The other thing that we're doing.
Sounds great.
Cocking around the edge of the pool. This is one of the things that should have been done years ago. Is that the the, between the concrete sidewalk and the stainless steel gutters, it should have been caulked. And that is a big reason why the water fills up the hole or the pool's at and made it heave up. And we are in the process of uh, or I'm in the process of of caulking around the pool to address that problem.
Tony, did you get the Plexiglas put up yesterday?
I've got, I've got it May. I got something that's just gonna set on the desk.
Okay.
Cause it's just a little piece. It's only like twenty by thirty.
Right.
And so I've made a little thing that just sits on the desk.
Fine, as as that's, as long as we can sit her behind it, that's the only thing that we really need. Um, and she's fine with that. Um. So anyways, pool's opening. It is what it is. It's nine dollars per time slot for anybody that's not there. Um, or anybody that doesn't have a membership. And just a quick update on the memberships. I don't have an exact number. I know we're well over forty. Um, we have not checked Becky's voicemail or anything in the last thirty six, forty eight hours, so I took ten memberships yesterday myself. And to tell you in the village, out of the village, two, two were residents. The rest were non-residents. So we have a lot of residents, don't get me wrong, but but yeah, eight of them were non-resident.
The nine dollars, you say that's been pretty standard for a day pass anyway, right?
Uh, that was our.
Last year.
Correct. I did not change anything legislatively. Um, I could not. And so that was, that was part of it. That was the emails back and forth with Gene. So I actually didn't want it to be ten, a dollar really. Um, but that was before I realized it was nine. So um the only thing, and I'm really gonna say this and I'll probably just smack myself for saying this afterwards. The only thing legislatively that we did have that could hurt financially for us, we did do an after five resident only pass. Um, that we do not plan on on, and this is something Gene, you're on here, Council's on here and you guys can make this, you know. So legislatively, you guys did do an after five pass, which I totally agree with before COVID. It was for five dollars instead of nine. Um, do you guys want to allow residents? I mean, here's how I left it. It's nine dollars. Um, but again, if somebody's upset about it, clearly it does say five dollars for residents. Thoughts? If you guys want to go around really fast, because I would love to tell John, give it to him for five. I mean, I'm just saying, it's going to hit your bottom line.
What what are the hours of the pool? Do they change the hours?
Okay, so again, yeah, the time slots are eleven thirty, which it used to be twelve, so it's eleven thirty to two, two thirty to five.
Thirty to two thirty. It's eleven thirty to two thirty, three to five thirty and then uh.
Five thirty to eight.
Yeah, or, yeah.
So we did not, we did not extend it. Um. Because if MPCA still wants to do some of their events, they typically do their events starting at like eight o'clock. I I do not know if those, I'm not here to announce that they are doing them.
According to my sources, M- MPCA has already said, no, no family fun night. There's no point in doing it if you can't have unlimited people, no wine and cheese. They are currently operating on, they're not doing any of it. They're not happy about it, but that was the last word they said on it.
So if we pass this legislatively, I don't see a way around this. We cannot just arbitrarily go back on our legislated word to the people of our village. It it brings back the whole credibility argument. I, I'm not sure what the solution is. I'm not smart enough for that, but.
If the time slots stop, what I'm anticipating happening and hoping happen is that we start to do two time slots from morning and an afternoon. You know, I, we'll see how things go, but if the, the last time slot starts before five o'clock, then there will be no people coming in after five o'clock.
No, because I can come to that last time slot and not get there until five.
Well, what I'm talking about.
Five thirty.
The, what I'm talking about is when I anticipate this going to two time slots and having it going from noon to four and four to eight.
Yes, but if I sign up for the four to eight, but don't show up until five oh five, because that's when I get home from work, I have now showed up after five.
Started it, but the time slot started at four.
Without time slots, the time slots start at noon when the pool open. If I show up after five, I show up after five. If the legislation says if you show up after five, it's only five dollars.
Yeah, but we have new, we have new rules now about the fees and it.
Right.
Got time slots. But we can't change the legislation without passing legislation.
But I guess that's what I was trying to say, Mar- um, Councilman Booker.
So maybe we could let Gene chime in because I'm in agreeance with Tony. When you do time slots, time slots are the time slots. If you come in later, you come in earlier or you can't come in earlier, but if you have a time slot that's at eleven to three, you do not have to come in at eleven, or I'm sorry, eleven thirty. So the time slots are the time slots. If they come in after five, I get what you're saying except for the fact that the time slots are set. So my view is the same as Tony's. If we're not going to have a time slot that's after five, the price is nine dollars. I guess maybe here's my question for Gene. When you have we have legislation, but then we also have rules. The rules state that we have and which has changed because of COVID, which if you look at anybody's rules or anybody's things, a lot of things are different. Um.
Yep.
So is there a difference between, sorry, I had the, my other one locked up. Um, is there a difference between setting rules versus the legislation? So if we have an actual time slot from four thirty to eight, can we say that, and I don't know that we, let me rephrase this. Do we even want to? Does everybody want to give residents the five dollar rate, period, after five? Maybe there's not even an appetite that maybe people aren't as concerned about the bottom line as I am.
Want to do that anymore because of the new rules.
Yeah, I think the, I think the new rules have changed the situation.
Yeah.
I'm okay with doing away with that because again, the entire financial situation is different. Uh, right? I think that the idea was to entice more people, more residents in after five, but you know, that's, there's a mixed bag in that. So.
Then let's have a legislative solution.
Right, well, so my.
We can get that together before Monday. I mean, we got a fee schedule that is obviously based on a mode of operation that we've used in past years because we didn't have any of these constraints. And it makes sense for that, but this is a great discussion. Based on this discussion, it sounds like we got consensus that we probably don't need a evening time slot residence only at a reduced rate, which for this year, we can go, we can go and look at that fee schedule and base, base the fee schedule on the modified operation. That's not a problem. We can get it done for Monday.
Yeah, I I wouldn't be opposed to doing away with it just because of the, because of the requirements as they are now. I just would have preferred something, you know, transparent legislative, I guess. That's, that's all I have to say about that. I'm.
Yeah, it helps, it helps get the word out too, if you do it legislatively too.
And I'm, I am.
Well, if everybody's in favor of that, let's just get that going for Monday night.
So my question though is, we have to have five in favor. Are we going to have five in favor? Uh, because I know that there was some people that maybe weren't as excited that the pool was opening. Um, can we do it as an emergency, waive the readings and do all of that? Do we believe that we have five?
Yeah, I think we do. I mean, as I said, my only issue with the five after five was if it's in legislation, we need legislation to undo it as opposed to just saying, well, we're.
And you guys do want to undo it. I guess that's my other question. Okay, good. And you guys do want to undo it? I guess that's my other question. Okay, good. I do too. I just wanted to make sure.
Good. And I'll work with Kim and Leah to get that done.
Okay. I'm done.
That community still?
The next section then is finance and in that one, we, we had, in terms of outstanding, we had the status of moving the money. Obviously I, it sounds like that's still in process. The sewer fund money.
Gene, yes, it's still in process. I've not heard of a resolution yet.
We've got it. We got the whole package together. I believe it had to check in with, and again, on Monday, we can have Leah or Kim give you the thumbs up on that, but I believe it's been submitted to the Department of Taxation and waiting for their thumbs up or thumbs down.
Okay. See, we have, Erica sent us regarding the facility. Erica sent us the four architect. I, at least you had to go pick it up. I picked up mine yesterday. Is how, I'm just curious about the, they all have the same type of construction of the, of the booklets. How, how did that, how did that happen? And so, you know, and we did it, we had, some people had binding, some people had rings, some people had, how, how are these all the same?
Yeah, those are just, those are copies. I had a PDF from each submission. They gave us, you know, for a matter of saving time and mailing, they sent us three hard copies, which we distributed internally. And then we can obviously take the PDFs and create more, which is what you folks have.
Okay. So, so we have those. I kind of looked at them. I, I think that at least three of the four, one of them is, is doesn't really have an office in town, so to speak, but three of the four anyway, looked promising to me in terms of they've done stuff locally and they've done stuff, stuff in the $2 million, maybe not, so 1.6 was the lowest one I saw, but at least some of them had projects that were less expensive. So that was encouraging. Like what is the next, the next step on that is to just do the evaluation, right? And so, did you also send the proposed evaluation for mayor?
I, I, yes, the initial form came with the rule set that Gene sent out, the guidance document. I had, in a couple of my emails, I asked if there were any comments on that. I had talked to the mayor and we can, we're going to make a, the idea was to make up a, you know, a custom made sheet. So if there are any other questions you want added to it, we will be happy to make that into the master sheet and then redistribute that out before any interviews. The next step obviously is, once you know, you look through these and we can include these as, as part of the sheet, I would anticipate as, as normal in the process, that if you like three of the four, you know, we evaluate, you know, you can evaluate them as part of that evaluation process. You can have an interview and then we can decide on the format for an interview. We can, you know, obviously do a hybrid. For those of you who don't want to, you know, come to a physical meeting, we can obviously go ahead and have a Zoom related meeting, but I would definitely allow them to come in and, and interview with the council or a subgroup of the council, however you want to do it.
I, I just would, in terms of just getting to the next step, which is the evaluation of these, just scoring these, can, can you send whatever draft stuff you have?
Yes.
So I, I don't know what I, I don't know what you already have. I don't want to waste my time on what you've already done, suggesting things that you've already got.
Yep, I'll get something out to you.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then, let's see, otherwise on finance, Kim Pooley did email us the March financials. And.
May.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I got that wrong in here. It started with an M.
We don't know what day or month it is. Trust me, I got.
May. So May financials and so I, I don't know if anybody had any comment. I don't even know if Kim's on right now, but we, we do need to set up the next finance meeting. So I, I need to work on that. And that's all I have on finance. Anybody else on finance? Okay. Safety, is there any, anything that wants, needs to be discussed on safety? We really don't have anything.
Yeah. So we, there, there was an email that I got from Gene. I didn't look to see who all was copied on it. But basically for, for an update, for those who aren't aware, we've been, we've had at least one or two conversations with the city of Columbus about maintaining, you know, fire, fire service, fire and EMS service through them. And we had offered to them our number, which was basically our current budgeted number. They didn't like that much. And Gene, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they came back with 252,000. Was what they came back to us in the meeting and there was some terse discussion and they are still waiting on a response. I think, I think they, you, what your email said was they've put it back in our court, right? But they, they took, they said no, and now they're waiting for us to come back.
Yeah, yeah. He gave me the metrics as to why they think 252,000 is fair. We, but we still believe our budgeted number is, you know, a fair contractual amount for the service they'd be providing. So I looked at their metrics and what I did and, and Brian, you may want to have a safety committee meeting about it. We'll get some formal response back to them. When I looked at their metrics, I thought there were some assumptions that could be challenged. And if we did challenge them, we actually have a higher, much higher cap cost per household than the normal household in Columbus. And we could propose that back to them again. They're just waiting for a response. And yes, I did have a fairly terse phone call with Mr. Speaks, but that's okay. You know, that, the harder they push, the harder we'll push back, I suppose. But it probably does deserve a discussion and even if our answer is same offer, we should probably get back to them.
All right. The, for those on the safety committee meeting, because I do think we need a safety committee meeting, I'd like to schedule one for this week. You know, my thoughts are either immediately before Monday's meeting, because we don't have anything in that hour beforehand. Or my, my next best day would be Tuesday or Thursday. So safety committee is.
With Monday, I'm good with.
I'm good with Monday as well. All right.
The only issue with Monday is getting it posted.
We have, yeah. So it'd have to go out to today or tomorrow.
It has to be signed by Leah, which is not an option because there's nobody in the office to sign it. I can, I mean, and, okay, Gene, here's my question. I mean, if I go in, I, I have the ability. I'm smart enough to do it. I can go in, I can, I can print up the thing. I can sign it and I can have Leah sign it on Monday, but I can't get Leah to sign it until Monday.
I'm trying to think. The notice you mean of the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Can you just, if, if you could provide her in writing, excuse me, your authority for her to sign on your behalf? And then she can sign it and initial it underneath your signature.
I think it's the other way.
The other, the other way around.
Oh, okay. All right. Same thing. Vice versa works as well. Yeah.
Okay. Let me see what I can do and just get it done. But yeah, I can go in and I absolutely have no problem going in and getting it posted.
Yes. Why don't we do this Monday at six? And for to get, to get those of us who will be part of that conversation on the right point, I think we will review their, their metrics and use that information to either, you know, come up with our own new number that we can propose back to them or not. And, and I hope to.
Kim and Leah do, I'm sorry, Kim and Leah do have, number one, Kim put all the information in a nice spreadsheet. Kim also has some budgetary information looking forward for a number of years as to a, a not to exceed that we, we could ever bear. And I think she'd be helpful if she could, if it could, if, if, if she could be part of that conversation, it would be helpful.
Yeah. If, and I know her, her time is difficult and limited, but if, if she has that prepared in like a document or a spreadsheet, we could probably make do with that.
Gotcha.
Tiffany.
I'll talk, yeah, I'll send her a message tonight and see if she can get us the basics. I'm sure she'll be listening later today anyways.
And did you say six or 6:30? You broke up on.
Six o'clock. Let's get that at six o'clock. So we have an hour. I think if we stay on task, we can get that done in an hour.
I'll send out the Zoom thing later today or in the morning.
If nothing else on safety, then legislation. We had just, I'm sorry, we had basically the sidewalk code update.
Yep, that's one I can think of.
All right. The, next is the, we have finished the committees and we're off to administration. The thing I had for an update was the number one, of course, we had the ballot issue and we know that, that we're having the first reading. I don't know if there's any other comment about that. And let's see, we had the just in terms, is, is there, should I go ahead and close out the new code enforcement? Is there any other final comments you have on that? We have a new code enforcement person.
We have a new code enforcement officer. He has not made many people happy, so I think he's done his job.
You're working the, I know, did, did he come in at a different salary?
It's a good question. I think it's the same as he was last time. I'll have to verify that. Ask me in finance or Kim, only because I don't remember.
Okay. And then you, there's a note here on terms of staff, in terms of the, an administrative assistant part-time.
Still working on it. We have a lot of, we got a bunch of applicants from last week and the week before, but as you're, you know, I was gone this week. Not all week. I was in the office Thursday and Friday, but I got in afternoon Thursday and Becky was gone Friday. So it's going to be myself, Becky and Leah to interview this person. So the plan is hopefully to set up interviews for Friday. So honestly, we've been, maybe I'll say it this way. With everything being the way that it was, it's difficult to hire somebody and have them come into the office when half the people aren't even in the office and we're not really taking people in. So to hire somebody yet was just not, that we would have just been throwing away money because we weren't, the main thing that we want this person for is answering the phones, answering the doors to let Becky actually do the things that she needs to do. That's kind of, you know, that's one of the things that we're looking for them to do. So there's a couple of things that, you know, we've kind of tossed around exactly what do we want this person to do? We know that Becky and Leah, or we know that Becky's on overload right now with the website, with the newsletter, with the pool memberships, with the checking and mail answering the phone, answering the door, the permits. The girl literally runs, I shouldn't say that. Becky runs everything in there. So she's on overload at this point. So we have to get somebody to, and she does the meeting minutes. She does all of the legislation stuff. She puts the packets together. And again, I could just keep going at what she does. So it's a matter of getting some of those things off of her lap. And let's just say she's a lot like me. She doesn't really want to give anything up. But we have to pull something back from her because she's, she does so much in there. So one of the things that we had talked about doing is having somebody just answer the phone and door. And then she could do all of the other stuff. So that's what we're working on. We're just trying to determine what we're, what we're hiring for. We know it's administrative assistant, but what is the job? And to do an actual job description, which we've had a hard time with in the past. So making sure that we do it the right way. But we're hoping by Friday, we will be able to do some interviews. So we'll be discussing that Monday and Tuesday.
Okay. Any other administrative updates?
Honestly, no. I, I don't think so.
Okay. Anything else? So in that case, the last thing on the, that's been on the agenda for us is P and Z and.
Just having a meeting, Diane, first one in a while, obviously. Have a variance that we have to see person to person. So that'll be, all be on June 17th, seven o'clock.
Okay, June 17th, seven o'clock. All right. That is all that is on the agenda.
Well, I'm going to talk about permitting. You know, I'm hoping that everybody took a look at the emails that have gone out recently from Gene and from Eric. You know, I want to start off with Gene's response about permitting. You know, first off, nothing that anybody has sent out so far describes where it says you need to get a permit for a driveway. So, you know, we spent all this time, that question still hasn't been answered. And if you look at Gene's response, he references codes that talk about building permits. And it's just not accurate with the way that he's describing. He says that we declared patios and decks as being major remodeling. Well, that's not accurate. If you read the code that, that he is citing, it goes on to describe major remodeling is considered changes that would require adding or moving outside walls, adding or changing floor or ceiling supports and adding or changing electrical plumbing or HVAC systems. The, the code that Gene is referred to has to do with building permits. And if a deck or a patio or a basement remodel or a shed, if any of those things has electricity or plumbing or HVAC, they require a building permit. Now, this isn't the permit that I am talking about. The permit that I'm talking about is a permit from issued and it's a permit required by the village. It's not a permit, a, a building permit. There's, there's code that says you need to get a permit for a fence. There's code that says you need to get a permit for a shed. But there isn't any code in our code book that says you need to get a permit for a deck or a patio. The stuff that Gene is presenting, first off, Gene really should have advised us that this fee code needs to be removed from our code because we do not charge fees for building permits. So you know, so you know, Gene's description of where we need, where it says we need to get a permit for a deck and patio is incorrect. Then you go on to Eric's response. The Eric starts referring to the minutes of the meeting where Mike Braun said that ordinance 16-2017 talks about turning over the approval or making approval of fences administratively done. Well, that has absolutely nothing to do with where does it say you need to get a permit for a deck or a patio? And it brings up another topic is that the only permitting that is done administratively is for a fence. All shed permits are done administratively, but our code says that those permits need to be approved by planning and zoning first. You know, so I'm really tired of, I don't know, the smokescreen that keeps. I don't know, the smokescreen that keeps being thrown up here by Eric and Gene when it talks about what we need permitting for. And I'm going to say it again, guys, answer these questions. Where does it say you need to get a permit for a patio, a deck, uh, and driveways? That, those questions haven't been answered yet. And I'm waiting, you know, the, the, I know the answer to these questions, it's not in our code, but nobody will listen to me. And yet Eric and the people we, you know, look to for legal advice can't even provide this stuff. So Gene, please tell me where I'm going wrong here. Gene?
Yeah, you want me to respond?
Yeah, what, what, what part of my description is incorrect?
No, it's, it's in there, Tony, and, and I can only give you legal advice as to how I best, uh, guess as to how it'd be interpreted by a court. I think the court would look at the details. It's, it's not simple, but they'd look at the details and they would say the building of a deck and patio, um, does require a building permit, but it also requires zoning clearance. Uh, we could obviously make the code even clearer.
You're wrong, Gene. You're absolutely wrong, Gene, is that those, you do not need a permit for a deck or a patio unless it has electric plumbing or HVAC, or if it moves, well, that's when you need to get a building permit for a deck or a patio. Your description is incorrect, Gene. It's that simple.
So, well, I, I respectfully disagree, but that's why we did, why we did the memo and the consensus of council, obviously we'll live with, but, uh, once again, I would change the ordinance if you disagree.
I would ask, I would ask all of my, I really am about fed up with having these Zoom meetings. I'm fed up with members of council not responding to the emails that go out. Uh, you know what? Take a look at what Gene presented. Read it. It said, it describes what, um, what major remodeling is in fourteen forty-two point zero eight. It is absolute, it's black and white. It's in English. It's not legal English. It describes what major remodeling is in the piece of legislation or the, in the ordinance that he provided to everybody. I want you all to look at that and tell me that Gene's, that Gene's, uh, explanation is accurate. It, it's in there. All you have to do is read it.
Okay.
So.
I'm done.
Thank you. So from a staff standpoint, here's the thing. Right back in twenty seventeen, and again, Councilman Braun, as I noted, was, uh, the liaison at the time. His notes essentially from that meeting are abbreviated, you know, and it says et cetera, fence is et cetera, and they passed a bunch of legislation and Councilman Wolf was there and he can speak to his memory of that. But the fact is, is that the idea at the time, uh, and Scott Dollinger was our code enforcement officer at the time, we were supposed to have codification, uh, online to make it easier for staff to then go through because we had multiple books that people were supposed to go through, search out and represent the council at a later date, different parts of the code that needed to be adjusted because there were a number of references. And we caught some for that meeting because we, you know, the, the impetus was simply to get, at the time, get it out of P and Z's hand so that we could speed things up as, as Councilman Braun stated at the time, you know, so that we could do a lot of stuff administratively and thereby benefit the residents. And that was the primary concern there. Uh, codification took longer. Mr. Dollinger left. We went through multiple code enforcement officers and we're kind of come full circle now. And, you know, as part of the discussion of permitting in the first place, we definitively have some gray areas in our code and we have things we have to wrap up from twenty seventeen as well. So this actually all segues nicely together and, you know, it's one of those things that from a staff standpoint, more than happy with councils consent as, as, as a whole body, not just one opinion, to go ahead and get things changed up and straightened out and make it the way it needs to be made per the village's directive.
Well, let me say that, you know, you, I'm glad you brought that up because if you look at what, first off, what Councilman Braun, his intention, what he believe, hold on Eric, don't start. What his intentions were has nothing to do legally. Okay? For, okay, first off, he's confused about the ordinances because sixteen dash two thousand seventeen is not the ordinance that, that, uh, made fences be admin, or approved administratively. That code is five dash two thousand seventeen fences. It's in that code that the approval of fences is done administratively. So his recollection is inaccurate. The code sixteen dash two thousand seventeen, it was, was, uh, the intent of that ordinance was to put in the language of playgrounds and parks as something that planning and zoning would approve, have to have approval of. That ordinance is why Pam is so upset that P and Z was not involved in the planning of the play of the basketball court because they, the intent of the, of sixteen dash two thousand seventeen was to put language in the planning and zoning rules that said that they had to have all those playgrounds and parks approved by planning and zoning. So as well intended as Mike may have been, his description is inaccurate. Again, if my council members will take a look at ordinance five dash two thousand seventeen, they will see that is where we have assigned, we have said that approval of fences is done by the code enforcement officer administratively. And code sixteen, or ordinance sixteen dash two thousand seventeen is the one that talks about approval of playgrounds. So none of those things have anything to do with decks or, or patios. None of it.
At the time, at the time, if I may, the re, there was language changes, which I can go back and I can show everyone if they really want to know the history, the red lines of what we changed at the time. Part of the red line from the original change was the duties of P and Z. At the time, P and Z, because you didn't have a staff, because you're moving to more professional assistance from an administrative standpoint, was reviewing everything under the sun, everything, decks, patios, fences, anything sheds. And so that was the purpose of that change. Very simple. Now, at this point, at this stage, at this stage, it doesn't matter really. We're here, we can change things at this point. So it doesn't matter. It's not a right or wrong thing anymore.
It says, Eric, it doesn't, the only thing that is approved administratively is fences. That language comes from the fence code. The language in the planning and zoning code in sixteen dash two thousand seventeen doesn't address administratively approving sheds or anything else. There's nothing in that.
Don't really have anything else to add, quite frankly, because I follow the mayor's directive. And if any other council members want to weigh in, this is going circular at this point.
You, you're not going in circles because you guys continue to blow smoke up our ass and I'm tired of it. I'm done. I just wish, uh, no, I wish you guys, my fellow council members would take a look at the ordinance that he's referred to. Five dash two thousand seventeen, sixteen dash two thousand seventeen. That, they do not, sixteen dash two thousand seventeen does not say what Eric is saying it says. It's that simple. And I need you guys to look at it and tell me where I'm wrong. And then we'll stop going around in circles if you guys would get off your asses and look at this stuff.
So I might understand that a fence can be approved by our code enforcement officer?
That's the way the code reads.
Right. The idea there being that if the fence is entirely to code, right, that there's no, you know, if it is designed such that it is the right height, with the right materials and placed properly in the yard, it doesn't need to go any further than the code enforcement officer. They can approve a properly designed fence, right? Why would that, the idea would be?
Code five dash two thousand seventeen. It doesn't come from sixteen dash two thousand seventeen like Mike Braun says it does.
Right, okay.
I, I, I just would, okay, so, um, you know, we, you always start your conversation, Tony, with driveway and it never ends in driveways. So.
Okay, well, let's answer the question. Who, where does it say that you need a permit to, to replace your driveway? No one has provided that code to me yet. Nobody. I can tell you the reason they can't provide it is because there's nothing in our code that says you need a permit for a driveway.
Anything in the right of way doesn't Jean provide.
It's okay, you, okay, Gene, here's your chance, Gene, to chime in. It's fourteen seventy-seven.
It's right, it's right, it's right in the memo, Tony.
It doesn't, the memo doesn't, Gene, the memo you provided. It has, I'm sorry, application from Westerville and it has an application for, for Perry Pike. None of those have anything to do with our code, Gene.
Can you let Gene speak, please?
Those communities do it under the right of way ordinance because the right of ordinance is more comprehensive.
It did, Gene, I don't care how they, okay, Gene, listen to me, Gene.
It, it, it's more inclusive, but, or it's more comprehensive, but it includes drive approaches, how other cities do it under the right of way ordinance.
Okay, but we're talking about the whole driveway.
No, the whole driveway is, I'm talking, I'm talking about the driveway approach.
I'm talking about the driveway. I understand.
And I, I don't know why you're on this topic. We are very specific about what we review, which is the apron in this case. We review the apron. The apron is what attaches to the right of way. It's ten to fifteen feet in the right of way.
Permits for the apron.
The permit is for the driveway.
No, it is not. We're not reviewing the driveway.
Not, it's not. We, we don't, yeah, we don't regulate.
Guys, this is what lawyers do is, you know, Gene, at some point you're going to start to stop defending the mistakes and start providing good legal advice because right now, all you're doing is defending the mistakes that are being made.
Here's my follow-up question, right? So if the permit is for the dri, for the apron and not the driveway, if tomorrow I decided to tear up my driveway but leave the apron untouched, the village has no, no input on that.
Correct. And, and I'll say how, how this is handled, explaining this to residents. The apron, and there may be a small portion of the driveway that's within that fifteen foot from the edge of the roadway, right? But that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at primarily how the, that the apron's designed and presented to the contractor in the best standards for curb or non-curb. Obviously, most of the village is non-curb.
I will, I will amend my question just for clarity. So if I take a tape measure, measure out fifteen feet from the road's edge, draw a line and tear up everything back from that to my garage, the village has no input or say in that.
We will not be telling you how to do that section, that little sidewalk to your thing. Yeah, it's your, it's your area. We don't regulate that.
How does this work? How does this work the other way around? If, if, uh, Brian had an apron and then he wanted to add a driveway that went all the way back to the rear of his property, then the village has nothing to weigh in on that either?
You have to.
So, so it's, it's funny, Joe. I actually have an abandoned, uh, cutout in my curb because, uh, they, at some point in the eighties, they moved my driveway. So I believe if what I am understanding is correct, right, it's been regraded and now there's dirt. But if I wanted to resurrect that old apron, right, from the road to fifteen feet back, the village would, I would, that would require a permit and, and whatnot.
Yeah, replacement of existing driveway does not require a permit, Brian. If, if, if you want to concrete your entire yard, you're going to run into lot coverage issues, which it may require going through planning and zoning.
Correct.
No, I.
Okay, so, um, it sounds like the driveway to answer, to answer, Mike, Mike, I think my question was answered. It is that there is no, uh, permitting for a driveway and that's why it's nowhere to be found because there isn't any. It's only a permitting for the apron, which is, I don't know if it's part of our ordinance or if it's, if it's someplace else, but there is a permit for the apron and not for the driveway. So, so that, that answers that question is there is no permitting for a driveway. So that's, so that's why you can't find it, Tony, because it's, it's not there.
Listen to me. The permit they're talking about is to ask to use the right of way. It is giving people the permission to use the right of way. It's not giving, it's not, we're not, we have no code to describe what is an acceptable apron or not. What we have code about is the use of the right of way. That's what fourteen seventy-seven, the title of it is, use of right of way. It's not, it's not apron replacement. It's the use of the right of way. It's talking about, it's, the, the code is designed basic mainly for utility companies, communication companies to ask permission to use the right of way. That's what fourteen seventy-seven is about. It's not about.
And residence. It says right in there, residence.
There's a residential application also.
About the upper utilities, but a, a driveway apron is a use of the right of way.
And it has been granted to everybody that has a driveway. We, I am, I do not need to ask for permission to use this section of right of way that I am using for my driveway because I have been granted the use of the right of way when the house was built. That's what the code is about, Gene, and you're twisting it around. Let me finish.
If you can't rebuild, it has to be, it has to be built to standards that's incorrect.
We don't have.
If you don't agree.
We don't have any standards, Gene, in our code that addresses aprons.
Okay. So it sounds like step one would be to clarify and, and, uh, address better the permitting for the apron. Okay, that's one. And now the second one is sixteen, two thousand seventeen and five, two thousand seventy, those? One is supposed to be, whose bird is that? One is supposed to be the playgrounds and parks and the other one is, uh, fencing and this is administrative. So it sounds like, I don't think there, it doesn't seem like there's a, a problem with how those two are written, those two ordinances. It's just people were reading them so we could look at those, but it sounds like they, I, I don't know, I haven't read them lately, so I'll, I'll look at them. But, and then the permit for the deck and patio, are we saying that, that we should put the permit, permitting, permitting for deck and patio on the same, in the same, um, area as the fences? Is that we want them to be administrative as long as there's not a, or is that different?
So to, 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 and the easiest way is let me prepare, again, legislation, let, since legislative committee's coming up, draft proposal, how we would move it around and where we would stick it, and then council can put it up or down after they work on it.
Well, we need to decide whether that's what we want to do first.
That's part of the legislation. They can look at it. If they don't want to do it, they nix it down.
Well, maybe the legislative committee could start doing something.
Wow.
Okay, so, uh, okay, so that's step, uh, okay, so that sounds like two good steps. Um, one, teasing out, teasing out the apron and, and putting together something that looks like, I guess it would look like, uh, the one we're doing on sidewalks, only it would be apron specifically.
We, we can add, everything is already in there, but we can clear it, clear it all up very cleanly and make sure it's somewhere where everyone's happy with it. These are, these are not hard things to do.
If someone has a, applies for a permit and they have an administrative turn down, there's no appeal process.
No, that's.
No, they, no, they, that's, that, it's only if there's not, it's only if it's clean. If it's, if it becomes not unclean, which is somewhat protest, then it goes through the process of appealing on that, right?
Okay.
Okay.
And Tony, if you want to come up with a proposal of legislative changes that you would like to make or ordinance changes, I would be more than absolutely happy to, excuse me, I'm in the middle of talking.
Sorry, sorry.
I would be more than happy to bring that up at legislative commending, discuss it and pass it on to the council. I, however, do not feel I need to have my committee tasked with trying to figure out what legislation it is that's going to make you happy.
Okay, let's just start with swimming pools. I wish you to let, I wish everybody would take a look at our swimming pool code because we need to start to talk about the difference between an in-ground pool and a temporary above-ground pool. Take a look at that and tell me that that, and that code needs to be addressed. And it doesn't have to go to planning and zoning. You can start it off in the legislative committee. And this is, I, I, I go back, I've been talking about home occupations. I can go down a list of, of, of things that need to be addressed. Let's start with pools.
Well, are you, are you classing hot tubs in with pools?
That's part of the problem. That's part of the problem is that there is no definite, the definition for a pool in our code is anything that holds. in our code is anything that holds more than two feet of water. So take a look at the codes, guy, at the swimming pool code. I think it's 12, wow, I forget. Take a look at that and tell me it doesn't need fit.
The problem with the swimming pool right now is with everybody that is having their own swimming pools, um, this is something that I, I, I know Tony's been talking about the swimming pool for almost six months at least, and now that we're in the predicament that we're in, you're going to have a lot of unsafe pools in the village, and there's not a darn thing we can do about them.
Well, it's been unsafe for 20, 30 years, since long as I've been here, so.
Right, but you're going to have an uptick.
A little bit longer.
Okay, but you're going to have an uptick in the amount of pools that you're going to have versus your normal three or four, because most people go to the pool. So my only point is, you're going to have way more pools, that this is potentially going to be a problem, not your normal couple pools in the village. So.
And what, what would the, what would the prob, okay, so problems meaning, uh, just safety, or problems meaning they're intruding on someone else's property, or?
I think you're going to have all of the above, but my concern is always safety. So you're going to have some people with very large pools, three foot deep. Are they removing their ladders? Are they not removing ladders? I mean, I know I saw just yesterday, a little boy drowned. So, you know, I, I understand it's homeowner's responsibility to, you know, make sure that they're maintaining their pool and, you know, keeping it safe, but it's, that's because we have no rules for them to abide by.
And the, the rule is, is that anybody putting up a pool that's deeper than two feet has to get a permit.
And I haven't seen one.
Whole other thing, that no one's done, ever done. I mean, there's been in-ground pools that have been installed without getting permits.
But, but, okay, so we have, we have something, and we're not, we're, we're not, our code enforcer is not enforcing the code that we do have.
Well, I think it's also difficult to see a pool in somebody's backyard that's fenced.
Oh, exactly. So how are you going to get over that? I mean, I don't understand.
I saw a pool last year from the street that was a temporary pool, but, you know, so it, you know, I know it's harder to enforce. You know, the other part of it is that, this is another issue that is confused, is that, is that the code says that the building inspector is supposed to inspect the pool. You know, and our building inspector is Franklin County. Well, Franklin County doesn't inspect the pools in Minerva Park unless we ask them to do that and provide them with the, our codes, because there's nothing in the building code that addresses swimming pools, believe it or not. It is a code, it's so, that's why I say, take a look at the code, guys, there's so many things about it that are messed up that need to be addressed.
Diane, to jump in, the swimming pools, especially the temporary ones that came out, you know, more than a decade, 15 years ago at this point, the, the issue is people use them and they start getting into the realm of above-ground, full-size pools. They're not just little baby pools. They're, they're, you know, foot plus of water, and different building departments have interpreted differently, and we'd have to check with Franklin County as to how they interpret, you know, those items. I mean, some building departments have interpreted them as full pools and need a fence, and that gets, it gets crazy really fast, and so we'll, we'll have to get you some better research on it, because it, it is a bit of a controversial area, quite frankly.
Right. So, yeah.
The code thing, there was some violations already mentioned for people not having proper fencing around pools on that last one that went out.
We, we have one already.
Okay. All right, is there, uh, anything else? Let's, uh, back to, uh, five minutes to 10?
So do we? Start looking in, start rejecting some of the issues that I have, and we can stop going around in circles.
So we move to adjourn?
No, I have, I have.
All right.
Um, we have three food trucks lined up for this month. June 13th is Angry Weiner. Uh, Mikey's Late Night Slice is going to be June 19th, and Cheesy Truck will be here July 1st. I have, and, um, I'm waiting for one person to call me back on something that they recommended, but they are still going very well. If anybody has any complaints or anything like that, that they want to pass along, or, um, recommendations, that would be great. Um, I know that.
That is Sean's last night was awesome.
That's what I heard.
That was some of the best curry I ever had.
That's awesome. No, they were as sweet as they could be. I mean, I talked to them for a little bit before, so, yeah, I mean, it's, I, I think the fun thing for me with the, um, with the food trucks, I know some people may not get a kick out of this, but just talking, hearing some of their stories and realizing that some of these small businesses are, you know, obviously struggling this year. So, you know, our village supporting them, they're appreciative, they're thankful, you know, all of the above. So it's nice to actually be able to, um, support some of these businesses, and again, our village is definitely coming out to support them. That's why we're still remaining at about one a week. So again, if anybody, um, I've seen some posts on Facebook, people are trying to get additional ones and this and that, but the whole point to the one a week is to make sure that they're really being supported. If they started doing it three days a week, people are going to get tired of it. So, um, that's the theory behind it. But again, that's just my thing, and if somebody has any other thoughts, feel free to let me know. Um, and then the only other thing that I'm going to say. What's that?
Sorry. The, the only thing I wanted to say was, uh, on the, uh, I assume you're leaving it to the truck people themselves to make sure that they are enforcing social distancing.
Uh, we don't have a police officer standing out there, but all of them are aware of our protocols, and they all are also aware of their protocols, um, because they don't want to be shut down any more than we want them to be shut down. So they all have their own rules, and they're also given a list of our rules.
Yeah, and, and I've been to several of the truck things, and they've been fine. The only one that wasn't fine was the donut one. And, uh, when I went by there, there were just a crowd, I mean, like 15 kids and adults circling around the truck with no masks, no, no distancing, no nothing. Um, so, but the other ones I've been to have been fine. Everybody's been very respectful and keeping their.
You must have been there at a really busy time, because I was the only one there when we went, so.
Yeah, no, probably.
Yes, we do the best that we, you know, as a village, they know what the rules are, they know what their rules are, they can, they can get shut down just as fast as, you know, we can shut them down, you know, if we find it's an issue or a problem. Um, but again, I, I, I know people get tired of hearing me say this, and I know some people don't agree with me, but that's on the families, that's on the parents, that's on, you know, you.
Well, yeah, but it, it prevented me from going. I was going to go, but when I saw that, I thought, I, I'm not, uh, no, that's not, that's not for me, but, uh, I, that's all, the only reason I brought it up is because, you know, it may, people like me may not go if they see a bunch of people without masks that are all crowded around and not respecting distance.
Right, and we won't require a mask. I mean, there's no way we're going to require a mask for outside.
No, I, I'm not, I, I know that you, you guys aren't, not all of you are masked people. I, it's sad, but I, I get it. So, uh, but anyway, what else did you want to talk about?
Okay, so the only other thing that I have is, this is going to be left up to you guys. Obviously, we have to have, this is not for you. Planning and zoning is going to be a public meeting. It has to be a public meeting. I am working with Kim on Monday nights meeting to, and I don't know, Gene, if you have a comment to this, but other than that, I'm already working with Kim, so I don't need one yet. Um, verifying that Monday nights meeting is going to fly as a non-public meeting, just live streamed, um, because that's the one that we're going, that's the one that we had to have a public meeting. So, we're trying to verify whether or not, um, we need to have an actual public meeting. Um, Mark, I respect the fact that I just got back from Florida, um, so, you know, I know some people are uncomfortable with that, that is, I totally respect that. Um, so if for some reason we do have to have one and I need to stay on Zoom, or I'm asked not to be there, that's fine, but if we can do it via Zoom, that's the plan. Um, but I'm just trying to verify that with Kim right now, whether or not Monday nights, um, public meeting for the budget can be done via Zoom, Facebook. Um, so that's, again, working on that. I'll let you know, we had communication last night. Gene, did you have something to say?
Yeah, no, and I, I think everybody else going through the same, uh, public meeting on the tax budget is doing it via Zoom. It's, it's, uh, falls within the parameters of the governor's, I'm sorry, the legislative fix that allowed the video conference and the telephone conference meeting. So, yeah, no problem there.
Perfect. So, um, the variance is going to be.
I'm sorry to interrupt. The, so, are you, did I just hear you say that Monday is the special meeting?
No, it's two Mondays, sorry. I'm, I'm lying. It's the 15th.
Yeah, thank you.
No, it'll be the 15th. I'll send out something for all of that. So we, yes, and I agree with Gene. I believe we think that we can just get that done normal. Um, my goal, I know not everybody's goal is the same, and again, respecting Mark's 14 days. So I do plan on, I know there's a couple people that plan on going back into the building. Um, I work there every day, Becky, Leah, the police department, um, Eric is in there, zoning officers in there. Um, we have easy ways to social distance, keep the tables apart, and still less than 10 people in the building. So, I'm, I think it's up to, you know, council, if they want to determine that some of them do not want to come in, but I don't believe these are productive. Um, I know I'm being live streamed. Some people may not agree. Some people I know agree. Um, but I don't feel like we're getting things done. I feel like I send out emails also that go unseen, unheard, no response, or I get three separate responses. There's no communication back and forth. So I just feel like the village has not moved forward at all, um, on various projects, uh, you know, opinion. I know some people don't agree, and that's fine. Um, but I don't believe that they're productive. I don't believe we're getting anything done, and um, I would like to get back within the next couple weeks, and again, respecting the 14 days. Um, hopefully I don't get sick. If I do, it is what it is. We'll go 14 days from that. Um, but there are people that will not want to come. If you guys want to try to figure out how to make arrangements for those people, um, we have installed, if anybody's been in there, because the door, obviously the building is back open, we've had to have mayor's court. I mean, we have had, you know, we're functioning, completely functioning. Um, we have installed hand sanitizer. As soon as you walk in the door, we have hand sanitizer on Becky's desk, on the other desk. Um, we are wiping down with Lysol wipes, just like any other building. We wipe down the light switches, we wipe down the doorknobs. So they are done throughout the day. Um, we're also doing everything we can, because just like everybody, I don't want to get sick any more than anybody else does. So we do wipe everything down, um, but that being said, there will still be people that don't want to come in, even with a mask, but I just, I'm, I'm not saying we're getting back to normal. You're not going to get back to normal, but in order to, um, get things moving, I feel like everybody's more accountable sitting at a table and interacting. That's my two cents. If everybody wants to continue on Zoom, um, as I stated, and did not see anybody going back and forth, I would love to see some Zoom rules. Um, I know people can just log out at any time. I think we had one person log out at nine o'clock. So, you know, I, I, I don't know why or how.
I don't know who's on this meeting, who's on, right now I see Diane, Brian, and Mark, and Joe.
David left around nine. I'm not really sure. So, but anyways, I, I, I just feel like, you know, we're sitting at home, my dog's running around, my kids are running around. I, I, I'm, I'm trying the best that I can, but, you know, when I'm in here at seven o'clock at night, I got people in the kitchen trying to fix dinner. I've got people, you know, I only live with three people, but yeah, mom do this, mom do that. They realize I'm on, you guys get it. So we either need to figure out some Zoom rules.
You know, Cindy, yeah, I don't know why you're not. I mean, you have an office. I don't know, you could be in your office at work.
I'm, I'm hearing that your guys' place is just as much stuff. My point is, is it's not as productive as I would like to see it. Um, and maybe we need to set different rules for it. It is not my place to set, you know, council rules for Zoom meetings, um, at all. I'm not your guys' boss, but I would think that, you know, again, I, I just kind of recommended it a couple days ago, and there was no interaction back and forth. I just don't feel like we're being productive. Um, it's 10 o'clock, so I think everybody's ready to go. Um, but I know we have a meeting, again, on the 15th. We have the budget meeting, that's also a work session. I don't know that anybody has an actual topic that they want to work on, um, on the 15th, because again, there's really not any interaction. So, I'm, I'm just being negative Nelly, I guess, right now, so I don't want to be, but I would love to see some communication, if it's via email, trying to narrow down, what do we want to talk about on the 15th, or do we want to talk about permitting? Do we want to talk about the lakes? Do we want to talk about, you know, what exactly do we want to do on the 15th, or are we just going to talk in circles again about whatever? So, I, I just don't feel like it's productive. Um, I'm, again, maybe one of the only people that believe that. I think everybody trying to scream over each other here is, you know, not really working out, but that's whatever. Um, so it's just something for you guys to think about. If you guys don't want to create rules, you guys don't want to continue, you guys want to continue with Zoom meetings, that's fine. I, I plan on being in there, and anybody that wants to come in there can do that, and then if you guys need, some people do need, um, additional, um, if you guys have different requests, and some people want to try to stream in, um, for, you know, for reasons, that's, that's fine. But I think that's on you guys to figure out exactly what you want to do. Um, but I think after my 14 days, I'm going to quit posting the Zoom meetings, and you guys can decide what you want to do. So I, I plan on being there. I know Tony plans on being there. I, I would assume that there's a couple that plan on being there, and there's maybe some that don't. So, it's for you guys to kind of talk about it, going back and forth. Again, I say something, and I don't really get any responses. I, I've kind of begged and pleaded for some responses the last couple weeks.
If we're going to continue the Zoom meetings, and people need to start responding to emails, they need to copy everybody, you know, so we can, you know, there's stuff going out about the safety committee that I didn't get in, any, uh, email about, you know, so if you guys don't want to have these meetings, then let's start doing stuff via, you know, emails. You know, it's, that's why I want to get back to having meetings, because I want to see who's paying attention to what I'm saying. I'm tired of going over the same thing over and over again, and I don't know who's paying attention. Right now, you know, so, you know, we've always had the opportunity to do teleconferencing, but people, businesses have meetings where people get together because they're more productive. You know, so at some point, I'm tired of hearing about the new normal. I want to get back to normal. Okay, and I haven't given up on getting back to normal. I understand that that's going to be a little bit different, but to redo the way we do everything is ridiculous, and I want to get back to having meetings. So we can get stuff done. If we can get stuff done with these Zoom meetings, then let's just keep doing the Zoom meetings, but it ain't working.
Well, I'm going to send out a email after this meeting and ask everybody what they're talking about with getting stuff done, because stuff is not an agenda item. So people have specific agenda items, bring it on. We already know all of, we already know Tony's stuff, but, but he's code enforcement, blah, blah. But I, yeah, I'm not sure what it, I don't see how, uh, productive it is to keep talking about, talking, Tony, to keep talking about stuff. What is stuff? What is stuff?
It's, it's very easy for me. You guys have known, I've been begging for input for the swimming pool. I, I've sent out the signup genius, just asking for your guys' opinion. I do not.
Never saw that one, never saw that.
It's on there, because Mark is the only one that responded to me. I sent it out to everybody. I have sent numerous emails while I was on vacation. Nobody responded to me. I have been looking for your guys'.
Yeah, and some of your email, when you send things on email, by the way, a lot of times, uh, you know, when you try to open, it, it, your cell phone doesn't work the same for, at least not on, on, on the version of Outlook that I have. It's like when you sent the, uh, the, the little snippet of what the website looks like, I could not blow that up with my.
That was from my, that wasn't from my phone, I don't think. That was actually from the computer.
So, I mean, you send things out sometimes that you can't figure out what it is, so.
Then could you, then could you respond and say you can't see it? That right there is exactly what I'm talking about. If you, I'm sending out emails and you can't understand them, or you can't see them, you know, again, so we just ignore it and move on with life? That's the problem. You hit the nail on the head right there, because I don't know unless someone tells me. So if I'm sending something via, you know, from my phone or from the new computer that I just got, in which I'm still having some issues with, because it's not, whatever. Um, so maybe it's coming from there. The only way I know is if somebody tells me. So, again, we're not being productive. If I'm the only one sending out 20 emails, nobody's responding, and I have no idea why, would be nice to know.
Diane, isn't there a confirmation checkbox that can be used for email?
Well, Tiffany could, but it makes a lot, it makes for a lot of emails. I, I think it's rather annoying, but yes, Tiffany could certainly turn that on if she wants, but I think though that, you know, there's, there is an obligation, uh, we should all be, although the, the sender of the email may be inundated, but, uh, just confirming that the email was received, uh, just not having silence, it's normal in business. We've never followed that policy since, uh, I became councilperson. People tend not to be responsive, and so, um, I guess we're, you know.
It's all working, because Tiffany, uh, asked for some responses, and I did respond. I don't know if those are lost in the shuffle someplace.
No, I've gotten a couple, but again, there were numerous ones that I've sent out in the last few days, just for people. Here's how I'm going to say this. I don't need everybody's approval. I, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking for that. I'm not looking for a high five, because I got something done, or didn't, or whatever. But the, as you guys are all aware, it is, the pool is a different beast this year. It technically goes through a different committee, um, in which, you know, there's been a couple little inputs here and there. I've kind of taken it over, because nobody else has, so I've kind of turned it into my baby. That being said, I want to make sure that I have council's approval. You know, this is a large lump sum of money that we're spending on this, that, you know, I understand it's budgeted, but it would have been nice to have a little bit more input. you know, I understand it's budgeted, but it would have been nice to have a little bit more input from people. And, you know, knowing that we're moving forward, knowing that we're doing this, I send out something and I just get nothing. I waited 24 hours before I posted the link yesterday in hopes that somebody would say just that, no, this doesn't look right. This looks right or whatever. I had one person respond to me on that. One person.
Oh, oh, that link. Oh, I did look at that. And I was totally confused by it because I thought.
Okay, but that would have been nice.
People, people had already, people had already signed up for it. So I figured it was already in production and.
Right. Because again, I, you have to comment. Email after 24 hours because I sent it out and I waited 24 hours before. But it, it doesn't matter. The point being is I don't know if there's a problem unless you guys tell me. I don't know who's reading the emails. I don't know who's responding to the emails. Mark, again, I appreciate it because you are the first one and one of the main ones that responds to me. And I can't tell you how much I do appreciate the fact that just getting a little bit of input, just, you know, again, I'm new with this, just like everybody else, or maybe not like everybody else. I've been doing this six months. I, I want your guys' input. I'm really trying to make sure that I have it.
Give you a lot of it, but.
You do. Yeah. No, you, you just didn't respond on my last one.
You know, I, yeah, if you, uh, you know, sometimes, uh, yeah, I can go ahead and say that I've confirmed it, but if you've got something going and you already put it in production, I think it's, uh, it's a waste of time for me to say I don't like it. Uh, but I can say, yes, I've seen it. I can do that.
When you don't get your, I mean, you need to voice your opinion.
No, no, not after it's already in production. People have already signed up. It's already in production and, 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 and it's working well enough that some people, that people can get in there and do it. Fine.
It's, but again, it's not just that. It was, it was numerous thing. It's been numerous things over the last couple, you know, obviously the last two months, I feel like sometimes I'm just talking to a wall. And then that's going to push me to do things and just not even bother. And that's exactly what I don't want to do. You know, it's something that I really do want your guys' input. I do want your, you know, obviously I send you guys way more than we've ever seen in the past. I'm not looking for, when I forward a quote or something like that, I'm just forwarding that for your knowledge. I don't need a response, but when I'm actually saying, can you please respond? And I get nothing. I mean, that's, that's a little disappointing for me. And I just feel like you wanted to know what stuff was. So that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about. I'm trying to conduct business via email and it's not working.
On the pool, I, I took the time to read all of those, uh, regulations and rules that, uh, Gene sent to you.
Yes.
Twice.
Right.
So I did my homework, but I guess I did, maybe say anything.
Right. No, and, and again, it's, it's, it's just maybe me being, I just don't feel like people are engaged. I don't feel like the Zoom meetings, everybody's, you know, always engaged and a- again, for me, it's personal, a personal preference. I do not like the Zoom meetings. I agree with Tony when you say that we've always had the ability to do this. There's a reason people don't do this unless they have to. Um, and i- it's, it's something for you guys to discuss. Um, I plan on being there, you know, and to, after, you know, it's actually going to be what? The 24th meeting. I plan on having it there. Um, I've opted to, you know, if it's more convenient for, you know, if people feel better, we could always excuse, um, the chiefs and not have the attorney there, just have the basic council meeting straight through. Um, we could, I could always ask for everybody's reports. Um, you know, just read them. So we're done just to keep the lack, you know, just a very few amount of people in there. Um, and again, the, um, these meetings right here, sorry, work sessions, um, those, again, in general. I'm like everybody else. I don't want to get up at seven o'clock in the morning and actually brush my hair and get dressed and go in there. I mean, this is so much easier, but I just, I don't feel it's productive. So I'm, I'm not, I know we're way past 10 o'clock. So, I mean, at this point, I think I've said my piece and I, I, I plan on doing that and you guys can make the decision to do whatever you guys want to do.
I, I, I saw something in one of your, uh, emails about a thermometer.
Yeah, we did, we do have a thermometer, um, that's at the community building. So, I mean, again, it's sitting right at the door for anybody that walks in. It's going to be in the building. Um, we can do thermometer checks. We can do anything that we need to do to make people feel safe. Um, and have no issue doing that whatsoever. And obviously I've been doing it daily since I've been back, um, and even while I was gone because, you know. So, um, but we do have the ability to do that now since, you know, Joe made me feel guilty and I had to go buy a thermometer. Um, so anyways, that's, that's where we're at. But I, again, I, I'm, I'm not judging people and I don't think we should judge people for people that don't want to, um, that are concerned. I mean, there, I, I'm not going to say I'm not concerned, but I'm, you know, I'm on a different level than some people. I, I, I look at it differently. I don't want to say a different level. I look at it a little differently. I mean, I'm, I'm cautious. I, I do the things that I'm supposed to do and need to do, mask where I need to do it. Social distance, you know, I, I have no need to stand next to somebody that I don't know. Um, so I am still that person. Um, I, I do believe that we need to take precautions for ourselves and.
All the clinics I've been to, Tiffany, the, 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 when they use the, uh, temperature measurement, it's screen out active cases, they don't expect that somebody, the active case to show up with it. But it, everyone else gains confidence that they're not going into a facility where, uh, you know, the virus is being spread around. So.
Right. And it is. I, 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 I think the same thing. I mean, just having the hand sanitizers everywhere and all that kind of stuff. It makes people feel as if they're using them. So, you know, people are using them. They feel like, you know, it's, it's a feel-good type thing for some people. So again, I get it. I understand that some people are more concerned than others and there are some people that should be more concerned than others. I mean, somebody like me probably doesn't have as, you know, high of a risk of dying from it, you know, or anybody in my family. So, um, that being said, I respect the fact that there are people concerned about it and I don't want to put them into danger if they don't feel like that. So, but that being said, my goal is to get back and people can make their decisions as to what they need to do and you guys can kind of figure out exactly how you guys want to handle that. Um, it, it's entirely up to you guys. So I just, for me, that, that's my choice and I know a couple of people want to and a couple of people don't. So, and that's, that's up to you guys to determine.
So you're set. So in terms of, just so I, uh, so I understand what, when you say, uh, you, uh, you want to have the, is it the second council meeting, the, the work session and the second council meeting or when do you?
It would, it would be the 24th to respect the fact of the 14 days for me. Um, the 14 days for me, I just, again, I just got home on Thursday. So that would be the 21st. So no, it wouldn't be until the 24th. Because again, I, I do respect that. I, I, I really do. And I'm not trying to put people in danger of any sort. And, you know, I don't believe I'm sick or will be, but, eh, you don't know. That's the problem with this.
Well, yeah.
Yep.
I don't have one written down.
We have one, the 24th is our actual, hang on, I, I might be at the wrong one. I'm at the wrong month. Um, the 21st, the 21st is our second council meeting, the 14, I'm sorry, no, the 22nd is our council meeting. The 15th is our special meeting for Kim and work session. And when I say special meeting for Kim, the 15th, that is actually, um, for the budget, the public budget meeting.
That's what I had down too. I was just, sorry. And.
I, I'm looking at May because I'm still in May.
Okay. That makes perfect sense then.
So I, I am one person that would like to continue zooming. I know, and I don't know if there's anybody else that wants to, but I don't know, but, but, and I, I certainly know how to set up a Zoom meeting, but, uh, me setting up a Zoom meeting means that someone in in the administration has to, I mean, somehow this has to link up. I mean, uh, if we have some people in the council room in the council meeting, we have other people who are not. Then, um, I'm not sure technology wise, I'm trying to puzzle through how that would, how that would actually happen.
Yeah. Again, that's something to work out. We've got.
So I guess, yeah. And so I guess my question is, is, is do you intend to, in the, in the council meeting, do you intend to set it up, set up the room as usual with the long table and people sitting? Uh, without being able to social distance. I assume that's what you're talking about.
I don't think there's any need to. I think we would not connect the tables. I think we would push the one table further over, that table further back and this table further over. You'd have two at each table. One may have three or we'll put, if, again, if you're not going to be there, there's only going to be six. So two at each table, one at each end. That's it. Um, and if we had to do it differently, we could have one person sitting, you know, in front of Becky's desk or something like that, just so they can be heard. So there's easy ways to separate in there. And again, on a normal daily basis, there's an average of four to six people throughout the, the upstairs. I mean, we've had interviews in there. We've done all kinds of things with people, with numerous people in there.
Right. So, yeah, I wasn't, yeah, talking about that though. So for a council meeting, are you going to continue to close it to the public?
Depends. Again, I don't think we've ever had more than two or three people in there.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm asking you, you, you know, to, uh, that's, Tony said, this is yes or no. Are you going to continue to close the meeting to the public? On the 24th, are you going to open the doors to the public?
The doors are open to the public, but if you guys don't want to, again, I, I don't know why you're asking me to make the final decision on that. I mean, this is also.
Because, because the council, yeah, well, no, because you are the president of council.
Well, that's fine, but there's also six, I respect the six members. And if you guys ask me not to, I would respect that. So again, it's going to be live streamed on Facebook. It's going to be, to me, it's more about us being productive. Um, and if it was productive and.
I'd say we don't open it to the public and it's.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have no issue doing it. And it's still going to be live streamed. To me, that's no different than we're currently doing. So.
Yeah, people, people eventually might like to, uh, have citizen comments. You have to have a way to have, uh, you, you have to have a way to have citizen comments at some point, whether you ask for them to write in advance or whether you give them an, in a Zoom invitation so they can pop on and make their comment, but you can't continue indefinitely to, because this is indefinite. Uh, this virus thing is indefinite.
You need to keep, if it's in person, you need to keep the distancing between, uh, the members of the public that come to the gallery.
There's not enough room in that, that.
I, I know.
Keeping that kind of distance, six, there's not enough room.
That's what I'm saying. If, if, uh, it would be unusual, but if four or five people showed up, uh, we'd have to, you know, do all these technicalities for them.
Well, this brings up a good topic that we need to decide how we're going to go about conducting our meetings.
And the other thing is if some members are, if some members are there electronically, can they vote? I think Gene left.
So what we've been doing, Joe, is we've been voting electronically.
Yeah, they passed that legislation that, and it's why we've been doing meetings this way. Even if one person was just Skyping in and everyone else was there, I believe that one person could still cast their most, their voice vote.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still here. If, if you can hold a meeting where the council members are actually in the chambers, we can bring the public in electronically. We don't have enough space for social distancing. Um, and, uh, if a member is uncomfortable, if a member of council uh, or the administration is uncomfortable being there for whatever underlying health reasons, that's okay. We can bring them in electronically too. It's possible. It takes a little work structuring that whole thing. Um, but, uh, until they lift the 10-person limitation, uh, to have a true public meeting and allow the public, you know, uh, access and not just limited to two or three of them, it's going to be a little difficult. We anticipate maybe that 10-person limitation will at least be expanded to a bigger number, uh, July.
Well, that kind of answers your, that kind of answers your question, doesn't it, Tiffany?
No, I was expecting it to be released, you know, I, yeah, I mean, I was expecting it somewhere around the 19th. Um, when they open, you know, theme parks, casinos and everything else, that it was going to increase to 25. So I was, I was anticipating 25 to 50 people, um, for groups here in the next week or two. So, um, and yeah, he might be right. It may be not until July. So I, I guess Diane, there's not a yes or no answer. My, my answer is what council's comfortable with. It is, I do not have an issue doing just the six council members and myself, like I said, and excluding chiefs and all of that to give reports. Um, the meeting of the 24th, we actually don't have any of those reports. So that one should be pretty straightforward, in and out 10 minutes. Maybe an additional topic or something quickly. Um, it would be the first one of July, and I keep saying the 24th. I, I need to get this calendar removed. Um, so July would probably be the first real meeting that we would determine whether or not the chiefs needed to be there, um, what people were comfortable with. So again, you're, you're about a month away from that particular meeting right now, um, to make a determination between what you want to do with the council people that don't want to come or not able to come. Um, and I, if I'm not mistaken, it's all the way till July 13th is the next meeting. So you have plenty of time to determine exactly what you want to do because nobody's going to show up on the 22nd of June for a five-minute meeting. So keeping that one live streamed, um, residents out of the building, um, somebody monitoring the Facebook page, they could, um, as you, I, I don't know that anybody else is watching it, but I'm, you know, I'm not ignoring people, but yes, I am watching the Facebook video, um, and watching comments. And yes, there are comments. So people can type in, if somebody actually had a question, um, we could put that in here. I did get somebody talking about, um, a community-led fundraiser to help offset some of the costs for the lake, which is not a bad idea. It's a great idea. So again, maybe thinking something along this line. So I can, we can read the comments. We can read the questions for commenting anytime. So it's not an issue. And now Mark is on here watching.
Yes, I was.
So again, they can, they can easily respond. I can check it. It is not an issue. It's not a problem. People can chat in on it. Um, so not an issue. It's just a matter of what everybody's comfortable doing. Um, again, I don't think it's really going to be that big of a topic for over a month. Still, it's going to be the July 13th meeting is when we would determine whether or not the chiefs would be there, fiscal would be there. Um, we would have to see how many people we want in a room. And just because we're allowed to have 25 people in the room, maybe we still keep it to the seven. Maybe you guys keep it to the six of you and you don't want me in there. That's fine. Uh, I'm kidding. Um, so we have over a month to figure out what we want to do for that meeting because that's going to be the one that would have everybody there. The 22nd is not going to be a big deal, um, just because it's, again, it's going to be a quick read of legislation. If we even have, well, yeah, we'll have a couple. Um, so that's it. I mean, it's just, you guys have some time to think about it. I just kind of wanted to tell you where my head was and why my head was where it was. Um, and if somebody could give me some really good reasons as to why not. I mean, I feel like, you know, people are out and about and there's some that don't want to, that I, I'm, I'm not judging them. I, it's, but I'm in the position that I want to move forward, um, trying to get something established with the lake, trying to get something established with a couple of different things that we're working on. It's just difficult to do these.
All right. I moved to a germ.
There you go.
Second.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks for being with me, guys.
Bye.